And then.
Okay, we're recording.
With that, I'll go ahead and call this work session to order. And Jeff, do you please call the roll?
Counselor Pete Sold.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Hamblin.
Here.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Thank you. Per tradition, I'll go ahead and go through our agenda for this evening. And then I will pause for each item. If there's any questions from counselors that you would like to ask to kind of prepare staff for questions that might be coming their way or any procedural questions, please feel free to use this time. First, we will go into public comment. With public comment today, I've split it up into two areas. One will be a general public comment. And then we will also receive public comment on the development agreement for Gunderson Road. We'll have a separate public comment at that time for the Gunderson Road and Bailey Meadows. With that, is there any questions on our consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah. Counselor Lee.
I have one. I wondered if the discharge document was a public document. Had some people over on council road that were interested.
Jordan?
Yeah. What document?
The one that we got as a link to the agenda, the detailed discharge alternatives.
Sure, like the application and the agreements related to that or?
It was the consultant's report about how the wastewater might be used.
Gotcha. The one from the email. Yeah, we could post that. That just had come through last week. And we hadn't really had a chance to talk about it and how it just that, but that, that's that. The recycled water portion. And yeah, there's a lot of great information in there. So yeah, we'll get that posted up and the public can see it. And that's part of like the bigger discharge alternative study, one component of that study. So there's more to come. There's a wealth of information in that, that study. So.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other questions on items on the consent agenda? Counselor Schultz.
I just noticed a it says that we're spending $100,000 a month instead of a year in the minutes on our pool. Maybe just get that corrected.
Thank you. Yes.
That would have changed the calculus of that decision.
That would change a lot.
I still want that other, the rest of that money.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, so moving on under new business, we have the development agreement conversation. And then that will probably, well, I know it will, right? It will lead into old business. The Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. So most of our conversation will probably take place under the development agreement and then flow into some kind of decision with the Bailey Meadows subdivision. If you haven't seen it yet, Jeff was kind enough to send around public comments that was submitted before 5:00 PM today. It is also now a link off of the agenda on our city website. Is there any questions on the development agreement conversation as well as our Bailey Meadows for tonight? Counselor Schultz, did you have a question? I just saw that you unmuted yourself.
I've been unmuted the whole time.
Oh, I meant Smallwood, but we're good. Okay. Okay, so with that, we will then get into a conversation, our utility assistance program. Any questions? And then transit operations contract authorization. Great. From there, we'll go to our city manager report and then our counselor committee reports. Tonight in our work session, we have two items. First, we'll be discussing a proposed childcare grant program that our staff has rolled over and put together, put in front of us and get our thoughts on. And then as well as a private sewer lateral replacement options for us and have a conversation and provide staff direction on. So with that, let's talk about the proposed childcare grant program. Jordan, is that you or Kelly that's going to present that to us tonight? You're muted, Jordan.
Actually, that's David who is right next to me.
Hi.
So I'm gonna do that and turn over to David Snyder.
Great. Thanks, David.
All right. Thanks, counsel, and good evening. I know Kelly O'Neil is gonna have some comments on this as well. So. So the grant program that we put together for childcare, to incentivize childcare businesses in Sandy. What we put together was a two-part grant program, the first part of which would be the bulk of it, would be very similar to the tenant improvement program. The tenant improvement program, just to refresh, is 50% reimbursement program up to $50,000 in project costs. So it reimburses up to $25,000 of city money. And it is for restaurants, for the interior of a restaurant. It's basically the inverse of the facade program. We thought that would be a good base for this program as well because the TI program seems to work pretty well. The only real difference would be that instead of the TI program reimburses for industry-specific things in restaurants, specifically grease interceptors, hoods and fire suppression systems for kitchens. Since none of those things would really apply to this, we thought about the industry-specific items that might be required for childcare center or childcare business. And the one we, the one we came up with was they're all required to have an outdoor play area. So we thought that maybe providing cyclone fencing to be able to fence off an area appropriate for the state would be the way to go. So what that would mean is for the interior, pretty much anything on the interior of a building would be reimbursable. That would include first and foremost, any sort of ADA improvements to the building as those would be required by a bunch of different levels of government, but also include making a, modifying or creating a compliant restroom that the state may require. Constructing, demolishing or moving interior walls, plumbing, electrical, lighting and the such. And then for the exterior, like I said, again, any ADA improvements would be approved. Exterior lighting, because that would be required for some of the entrances to such a building. And then again, the fencing and play equipment. We would envision, we can provide up to $30,000 in reimbursement, but since this is a two-part program, I'll explain the second part in a minute. We thought $25,000 for that section would pretty much cover anything that a business would need to do on the interior. The second part of it is a piece that would assist these businesses with marketing and advertising their businesses. We've noticed over the course of time that these businesses are quite often undercapitalized. A lot of small businesses are undercapitalized, but childcare businesses particularly don't seem to be operate with a bunch of money, particularly at the beginning. So and one, this is one area where we've noticed that they, they haven't really met the requirement, or they haven't really put together stuff that would put their business out into the community and let people know they're there. For example, one of the childcare businesses here in Sandy, when I first started working with them, did not have a website at all, and they were operating their business off of a Facebook page, which at the time was down. So the only way that anybody could get their phone number or check to see if they had available childcare slots was to call a number that they had stenciled on their front window, which, as you can imagine, is probably not a very effective way to market your business. So some of the things, so we decided to make the additional $5,000 available for these businesses and that Sandy would cover 100% of the cost for these things because it's that critical that we, that these businesses are able to communicate with their potential customers. So again, up to $5,000 worth of assistance would be available. 100% of the cost would be borne by the city. Qualified expenses would include the professional development of a website for this business, not monthly maintenance fees, just the creation of a website for them. Would also include help with an initial grand opening marketing campaign in the community, which would include social media assistance. And it would, could also include a one-year membership in the Chamber of Commerce for, for the purposes of advertising in the local community, networking with other businesses and workforce development in the event that they need to hire staff. And finally, it would include the coverage of all installation costs for Sandy Net Fiber and one-year prepaid Sandy Net service at the low level of 300 megabits. The, the cost for that for the city would be negligible, obviously, except for the installation costs. So that's kind of what we're thinking about, and we'd love some input.
Great. Thank you, David. Couple of things before we get into our conversation on this tonight. One, I just want to say, you know, I think a lot of people, especially with myself and Counselor Pete Sold, were pretty vocal on our reluctance to keep going into the urban renewal fund. So one thing I do want to say is if there is some kind of some skeptical comments tonight, it's not at all directed towards staff. Staff has done everything that we have asked. We set this as a council goal. Childcare is a very important council goal for ours, and you're coming back with very creative ideas as staff for us as a council to consider and move over. So thank you for doing that. And I think this is a good idea, something we should seriously consider. I just wanted to kind of point that out right at the very beginning. I also want to kind of declare a bit of a conflict here. It's not really kind of this is, you know, my wife is in marketing, and so I didn't know about this proposal actually until I read it in the staff report. But I do want to say in conversations that, you know, we're always supposed to identify some areas in which your household could potentially down the road make money. I mean, my wife is in marketing and they're locally, and there is a marketing aspect to this. Just wanted to point those things out. All right. So how's this hitting everybody? Those people's thoughts on this? Counselor Lee.
Yes, I really liked the plan, especially the marketing part of it to get people started on the right foot. So I don't have any problems with it at all.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out, when you say 100% financed by the city, you are referring to the urban renewal monies or are you talking about the general funds?
Well, actually, that's a good point, counselor, because, you know, another, to the mayor's point, we also have to consider whether or not these businesses are inside their urban renewal district or not. Two of our four businesses are outside of that district, so they could not be funded with urban renewal monies at all. So that is something that'll need to be figured out.
Yeah, and as if, as you'll see in that report also, if the business locations within the urban renewal district, it could be funded with urban renewal expenditure. So the first part of the grant, the infrastructure grant. If council likes the marketing grant idea, we would still have to dive into that deeper to find where the funding sources would come. We kind of doubt it would be able to come from urban renewal. So if that portion of it, regardless, irregardless of the property's inside or outside the urban growth boundary, we would probably have to come up with a funding source for that piece of grant program.
And the question in that regard, you're saying that you did an analysis about whether or not this would be truly, I call it legal, but at least well within our purview of being able to do it. It's just yourself that did the analysis or do we have, is there a need to put the lawyer on for this? Or is it just something that we're all okay with it happening? So we don't need to do any checking to see if this is appropriate use of our funds? I guess general funds have no tie to it.
The, the infrastructure grant portion, every eligible expense would be the exact same as the TI program or the facade program. We could run it by the attorney to make sure, but there would be no, what, what staff is proposing here for the infrastructure side would have no difference than the combination of a TI and a facade grant. So I don't, I don't think there would be any, any potential conflict. We could always run it by David, but the marketing piece, we haven't really looked into. As far as.
Although, and Kelly can follow up on this, I would suspect the marketing piece probably can't use urban renewal funds regardless. That's just a gut feeling. I don't know that for certain. We'd have to check with David, but.
So it sounds like we do need to do a little bit of backgrounding to make sure we've got the right funds being able to be applied to the right categories and what we're doing here. I'm supportive of this. We need to do the work with these daycare folks and just needs to be done. So I think I'm supportive of it, just so long as we make sure we're not doing anything across the line.
Thank you. Counselor Pete Sold.
Yeah. You know, I feel that we gotta be careful about our urban renewal fund, right? And we've been hitting this up on these, all these different tasks everywhere. And we have big projects and the urban renewal district and the urban renewal, what it's about was for being able to do some of those things. And I think, you know, we need to find a path for helping in getting the childcare businesses established in doing that. I'm not saying anything negative about that whatsoever. That is great. We need that 110%. The urban renewal fund though is just being like, you know, when we can't find any money anywhere, we go there for it. So I'm very cautious about that. And I think, you know, that was a little bit of what Dan was saying at the beginning. We've talked about this in other discussions. As far as that goes, I feel very uncomfortable with the marketing aspect of it, that whole section. From being on council, knowing what our lawyers in the past have said is what it was designed for was to be infrastructure-based, to be able to bring up the tax base for that. And so building someone's website for them or paying their maintenance or their dues for the chamber, I think that needs to reside on any business coming forward for any of them on that aspect of it. I think the only thing I see infrastructure-wise on that marketing part, which wouldn't be marketing, would be the installation of Sandy Net, which is a physical asset, which we did do for many businesses all throughout town several years ago as an infrastructure, just like the streets and that type of thing. So as far as using urban renewal money for that, I don't, I feel uncomfortable with using urban renewal because I think the lawyer would also probably say that that would not be usable. I think we heard that from David, that that's a big question mark on that. So when I was reading that, that was my, around my heartache was on that piece of it. As far as the other, the piece, the TI-type stuff, David, what I remember is the same thing what David had said was grease traps, hoods, those type of things in there. And so those would, could comply with that as bringing a building up to those standards. But I think I keep looking from it, and I would hope others would look at it as the lens of what the urban renewal of any city is supposed to be doing is bringing back the value and raising the tax base of the money that it's coming from and not to be just moved, you know, for whatever project comes available because there's money over there that can do it. We need to have a plan for going forward. And I think we need to kind of look at that plan and reevaluate it every couple of years instead of coming back to that, that pot going, oh, we like this project or we like that project, you know, here's 25 there, 30,000 there. Because that's, it can distract from the bigger projects like the community campus that we've done, or the loans we have to pay back on the police department. In the, in the library, we may have paid off already. But there is the urban renewal part of that, as well as the 360-second, other things that we have in our plan going forward. So I have nothing against, and don't take it the wrong way, against childcare in any way. And I think, I think all of you know that. I've been an advocate for that as well. I just, especially around the marketing aspect of it, I don't think we can do the marketing. I wouldn't be supportive of the marketing component of that piece.
Thank, thank you, counselor. Counselor Hamblin.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Jeremy just said. I just wondered, David, if we did run this by our attorney around the marketing aspect, because I'm curious, I mean, normally we want to be a partner and, but not an invested partner necessarily. And this just feels like more of an investment to where we're, we're kind of in it with them as a city and a liability. And I just, I wonder if we did run that by David.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
We were gonna wait to run things by David. You know, once we start running things by him, it's 2:50 an hour. So we were wanting to get your guys' feedback. Different ideas first, and then after that, reach out to David to kind of talk about the legal piece of it.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, I, I would love to hear his opinion on that piece in particular around liability. Because aside from that, like, I think it's a pretty creative idea. And I think it's something a lot of businesses, in particular this industry, probably have less funds earmarked towards doing. But it's also a high-demand industry as well, too. And I just wonder how effective marketing is when there's such a high demand in that, in that arena. So.
Well, the, the thinking behind it really was just kind of trying to get these businesses off on the right foot, because a lot of the times, these people are childcare experts. They're not business experts. So, you know, that, that's where they fall down sometimes. Also, I probably should have put in the staff report. The 5,000, the marketing piece of it, that wasn't really intended by, I mean, I think the funding for that, again, I'd just like to repeat, I think would need to come from general funds regardless. And I think once we run that by David, I kind of suspect that's what his response would be, but we'll, we'll certainly find out.
The one, one thing to keep in mind is if you go on to larger childcare provider websites, sometimes they will have an indication of how many slots are available at any given time. It's kind of like getting a tee time for golf. You go on there, I mean, honestly, and you'll say, you know, at 11 o'clock, there's gonna be four slots open, so I can bring my children there. The local childcare providers we have in town don't have anything like that on their website. So the only way to get. What's that?
I wonder if they have space.
The last time.
There's golf courses that won't publish tee times.
Sometimes.
Tee times.
Yeah, we've been told that they do have space some days and they're having trouble, you know, people don't know that they have space. And so we were trying to come up with a creative way to have it available right on your phone to show actually where there's space and when. So I don't know.
Just a quick example, the last time I spoke with Bright Beginnings was maybe a couple of months ago. And she told me they had four open slots when I was talking. I said, well, I, I know you guys are probably full up. She goes, no, we have four open slots right now. We've had open slots for a while. That shouldn't happen really in this, I mean, with so much demand for this, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be anybody with open slots anywhere near here.
Yeah, I think sometimes it depends on what they have available and whether that fits the needs of the community as well, too. So they could have open slots for something that doesn't meet most of communities' needs.
Entirely possible.
Yeah, and that's a shift in business model rather than marketing.
Thank you. It's kind of funny, Bethany, you put your hand up and I nodded at you to acknowledge it, but I have no idea whether you saw me acknowledge that or not. Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I am. I really like everything that you guys came up with, and I think it was creative. I'm kind of with John and Jeremy on wanting to flesh out the marketing piece of it. When I first read it, I was like, this is great. And then I was thinking about it and wondering how that will fit. If it's fair or like, I don't know if that's the right word, but I agree that it's absolutely a need. I was a childcare provider. We are absolutely not trained in the business side of things and do not know how to do websites and all that stuff. So I think it's great. I love the idea. I do. I'm just not, I guess, along the lines of what John and Jeremy were saying, I want to kind of find out what the logistics are there legally and how it looks. As far as the other piece of it, I love it. I want to look into how to fund it maybe, because like, as you said, we already have a couple providers that are not in the urban renewal district. And I just want to make sure that we are attracting people to open these businesses everywhere in town and not just in that area. So, yeah, I mean, we could look into where funds can come from to make it equitable for everyone, I guess.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yeah, I agree with what everyone has said. I don't think it needs to come from urban renewal, but I think we really need to think about helping new businesses on the marketing end so that the other investment we make stays whole. If we don't do some of those things, we're going to have failures after we've invested. So if we can find a way to make it work, that would be great.
Thank you. Counselor Pete Sold.
Yeah, on that marketing side, and John, this is maybe you have the expertise on this, but years ago, we used to have a great relationship and partnership with Mount Hood Community College and the marketing and business and how to run a business. And then we partnered with the chamber at the same time. And, you know, because there's restaurants that have the same need, right? You know, they may not have the cook or serve, but in a great ideas, but maybe not the best at the business model side of things. And so we used to have a program that we were hooking up new business owners or ones that were coming to town in this type of area. Quest, I believe, does not, does the community college also have a program where they are training childcare professionals as well in that? Is there still a program that we could guide people with, that they could partner with and help with that?
So I, I'm gonna answer in two ways. The first is actually training people to serve in this role or work in that industry. And we do have our early childhood education program. We have the one of the largest Head Start programs in the state as well, too, if not the largest. So we do the training aspect of that, but I also would recommend we connect folks with a small business development center. And that's really where they've got grant funds and resources available to business owners and trainings available, too, to deal with this exact thing. So I just, I wonder if there's another alternative that actually provides them a resource and not a liability? Because that's, that's just the, that's the only concern that I'd have. But I'd absolutely, I think we underutilize the small business development center. We've actually just named a brand-new director, met him today. Ibrahim is his first name. I'll get David connected to him. So, yeah, so I got to meet him today and learn a little bit about him as well, too. So happy to connect that.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, counselor. Thank you. I, I would probably reach out to the SBDC anyway about that because you're right, there are, they do have access to a lot of resources over there of this type.
Thank you. I'm gonna call on Counselor Exner. While I do that, Jeff, I see that Chris Jones from the chamber has had her hand up. Would you mind letting her into the conversation as Counselor Exner addresses us? Counselor Exner.
I was just gonna say that.
Okay, well, thanks. I appreciate it. Not to be a wet blanket on this one. It, and I agree that we need to be functioning with our daycare people and find out ways to make this happen in a way that makes them more adaptable, more reasonable. But I also wonder if we're not gonna get some people say, well, why not do the same thing for, I don't know, surveyors and for people who are doing other things in our city? So I want to be careful about how much we push our way into a capitalistic kind of a, of a business where people become marketed. So when I first started being a Realtor, I knew really a lot about real estate. I knew how to design papers. I knew how to inspect. I really didn't know until I had to be forced into it to learn how to do the marketing side of this world. And I learned that without doing that, I would end up with really busy times or really quiet times. And so I know that there are other people, other businesses out there that are doing these kind of things. They're not being subsidized like we're talking about. Get the part about, that's what we need. I also want to say I think we have a lot of the preschool and the school kind of kids, maybe not schools much, but out of the diaper range of kids. But I think that one of our biggest needs and what I've heard from mothers is the diaper roles. Not too many daycares are willing to take on the diaper kids. It's just a lot of extra work. There's health issues. I think we ought to be thinking about supporting those a little bit by waiting towards that direction. I can, I can name, and I'm a grandpa who doesn't have grandkids in the area. I can name five or six daycare areas right now that have four, five, six, seven-year-old kids being taken care of. But I couldn't tell you. I, I don't think it'd be tough to find more than one or two that were in the six-months, year, two-year category. Why aren't we, we should be focusing on the ones that really have a real, real strong need for it, especially as we're talking about opening the city backup, county backup. These parents, you know, they need to get back into their work. Looking for ways to find a way to take care of the kids in the meantime. So.
Thank you, counselor.
We go.
Appreciate it. With that, Jeff, why don't we go ahead and unmute Chris here and Chris, you're live. Welcome.
Hello. So I must accidentally did my hand up. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Well, would you like to add to the conversation?
Um, you know, I, at this point, no. No, sorry, I was multitasking at dinner, so.
Yep, no problem. Just didn't want to leave you there with your hand up. Thanks, Chris.
I will add, I will add one further thing after Carl's comments and a few of the other comments. And going and Counselor Lee or Schultz, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but from hearing from Clackamas County workforce and other organizations during these childcare desert task force meetings, that is the problem, Carl, that you've identified. Is that not enough daycare opportunities for little children, probably beneath the age of three? And one of the big reasons for that is because to make those typically work, you have to subsidize those businesses. And one of the big reasons for that is because to make those typically work, you have to subsidize those businesses. Because the ratios of how many providers to children under that age don't make it pencil. So that's what we're trying to do here is find out ways to help subsidize childcare essentially.
And the other issue with that age group is finding and keeping teachers. There's not enough qualified teachers for that age group.
So are we planning on doing that now? I mean, Dave, is this, is your focus designed to be, I'll call it the diaper roles. Rather than just all the full range of kids?
Well, we had, I, I will also add to both.
We're going to change your title with it, Dave, so be careful.
The, the two previous, Counselor Schultz and Kelly as well is, it's the zero to 18 months, I guess, that where we have the biggest need. Right now. And no, I hadn't thought about that, Carl. My, my focus on this was to make this available to any childcare business because. There's a pretty heavy need for all of them, but there is particular need for that age group. You are correct about that.
So we should, maybe we should be biasing our. Desire to help in that category rather than the older ones. I get the part about needing to make sure we keep these, these particular. Businesses up and running and going, and that's difficult, but. You know, again, I'm, I'm a capitalist kind of guy, and if you don't learn, maybe you have to learn. A lot of business, but let's focus on the ones that really we need to.
Counselor Schultz on that, is, is the task force meeting any more times where you could maybe ask for this to be a conversation topic to provide counsel with. The staff with some recommendations, because I got to imagine a conversation as to where we should be focusing our resources as far as age group would be. Pretty useful.
Yeah, and it's, it's true that the, the biggest issue is with the youngest, but. There's a desert in every age group, so I'm not sure that we need to be super focused. And part of that is very provider specific. Some we've spoken to are just not willing to do the littles unless they were able to be subsidized. But that's not on us. That's going to have to be a higher level situation. Because if you're only with one teacher for four kids at that age group when they're that little and you just can't make. You can't make it work unless you have a lot of other kids. So I'm not sure if we need to be super focused on that aspect of it for this program.
So we have another item. I'd like to start to wind down a little bit because I believe what we needed to do here was to give staff some direction. For them to then be able to kind of more finalize their proposal to put in front of the Urban Renewal Board. Because remember, we still got some of those members if we're going to spend some of that money. I, I did want to say a couple of items just on my take on it is I agree with what's been brought up. That's why I think we can kind of narrow down the direction of staff. And so when I'm finished here, please do feel free to speak up if you disagree with some of what I say here. And, and what that is, is I think there's, there seems to be a lot of interest from council to move forward, especially with the tenant improvement. Options. I think that while we're looking at almost a separate program for childcare. It would almost behoove us to talk about tenant improvement in general and maybe talk about just expanding that program into other sectors, right? So right now it's, I think for like restaurants and beverage, those kinds of things, maybe we just expand that to childcare. And maybe do a couple of other items. Maybe we want hospitality or something like that. The other item is, I, I land with the other counselors on the marketing end. I'm not really big on using. Too much of our funds on the marketing. I'd rather help with the infrastructure. There's been some talk about why we keep returning to the Urban Renewal Fund and Counselor Pete Sol mentioned we'd had a conversation about this earlier today. I think a big reason for that is our faults as counselors. We have a pretty ambitious council. And it wants to accomplish a lot, and we set some goals and the staff goes out and they, they do their job, right? And they try to accomplish these goals that we set forth. And our budgets, as we're all aware, are very tight. And, and the one budget that is a little easier to access because it's not as tight is our urban renewal. And so there's a tendency. Out of just necessity to turn to urban renewal to solve some of our problems to accomplish things. But with that is, is if we keep going down this path, our urban renewal fund is going to look like all the rest of our budgets. And so. I think a lot of the concerns and dialogue that at least I have is. I would like to really start reining in the spending. You know, I, I, childcare is a big. It's a big focus of ours, and so I'm going to kind of bite my lip as far as our urban renewal budget goes this time. But I am, you can, I, I think council can start kind of counting on me to start being a no-vo. Hereforward on urban renewal expenditures until we begin. To actually get a strategic vision for that budget and we become good stewards of taxpayer money and get that budget. Further and further away from being that of a slush fund. It's slush funds, a negative nasty word. What it is, is it's a fund where we're trying to accomplish our goals. And then we turn to that more easily than our other budgets, but we got to make sure that those decisions we're making is within the framework. Of what we're trying to accomplish with our big, you know, our overall vision. So that's just some of my take on that. Any other, I mean, is there disagreement on where I led staff on as far as that goes? Or are we good to go? Okay, great. Thank you. With that, let's move forward with our agenda. I believe probably Mike, you are up to talk about. The, I don't have my agenda for our private sewer lateral replacement options.
Yeah, thank you. The background information we provided, I reviewed, you know, it looks like we should really wait, what, three options to look at? There's some background about how we got to this point, the, the way we determined which basins we want to start in first. We have DQ funding this. This is an important. Project, just like the improvements to the existing wastewater treatment plant. And this, we can also. Hopefully we'll see some results from this type of work that we can reduce flows into the treatment plant, which makes the treatment plant. Gives a little more capacity and makes it run better. And so this is one of the first steps that I should point out. This is kind of a, a long-term thing. We're always going to be having to deal with. Reducing and eliminating inflow and infiltration into the collection system. And, but this is just the first big project we'll take on. And then, you know, we'll just have to keep at it on an annual basis. So there's a couple of options that we would look at to replace. Laterals in, in the public right of way and also on private property. You know, we'd pay the entire cost of replacing. Or relining the pipe on private property. Since we discovered that DQ will not fund work on private property. So the other option would be to purchase the lateral. From the private property owner, take it over, take over maintenance responsibility. Rehabilitate it or replace it, and it would be a, a city responsibility to maintain that. Pipe forever, just like we do the main lines in the streets. The third option would be to. Make it incumbent upon the property owner to reline a lateral that is leaking. And we, but we would kind of coordinate the works, solicit bids. You know, aggregate this into trying to get the best price for the homeowner. But the, and we might, another option is the city could finance, and this is what other cities do, and we cover the costs. Do annual or monthly payments or annual payments from the. Property owner. And the fourth option would be same as number three, but the city would contribute. A fixed sum towards the cost of the work, but the bulk of the cost would still be borne by the private property owner. And so, you know, this would be funded with half of the, the state revolving loan. Commitment we have from DQ. And. Is, you know, one thing we could do, we could still fund the work on private property. But we would have to find some other source of money. So. You know, the, the. Amount we would spend would be, still be three million, but maybe a portion of that would only be funded with DQ money. We'd have to go out. Into the private lending market and find financing for that work. But there wouldn't be the restrictions like there would be with the DQ money. And this is a good time to do that. You know, interest rates are pretty low. This is kind of a small, this would be a small issue or loans. I don't know how. Could they be, but they would still be higher than the 1.93% we pay on the DQ loan. But that's, you know, that's probably the. Best option. For doing this, because we don't have any other source of funding. So, you know, when I have the recommendation here of options three and four, it's really. The recommendation would be options one, three and four. And, you know, you know, I did mention that, you know, we just doubled the sewer rates, so. We don't want to put a burden on property owners. That have leaking or substandard laterals to make them replace the whole thing. At, you know, it's probably wouldn't be a good thing right now. And then if we did replace it, had a hundred percent city subsidy. Then, you know, how does this work in future years when we're doing the same program? You know, some people might say, well, gee, you know, in 2020 and 2021, you funded a hundred percent of this work. Why do I have to pay for it? So, you know, but we can deal with that in the future. And, you know, I did want to mention, Rob, Rob Lee is participating tonight. He can provide us some. Background. You recall, Rob was with Murray Smith during the Silly's Planning Effort. And now Rob is his own firm, Leeway Engineering, and we've engaged them to advise us on the larger project as a whole. And on this project in particular. So I'll turn it over to Rob, and he can provide some background on how effective. It is to replace the entire system and not just stop at the proper line.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So I thought the, the best way to do it, I know you're constrained for time, is just to give an illustration from another city. So City of Sweet Home, if you're familiar with it, it's further south on I-5, but it's similar to Sandy. It's at the foothills of the Cascades. They were similar to the City of Sandy 15 years ago. They got under a DQ regulatory decree. They're around the same size, around 10,000 people or so. They enacted in the early 2000s a 12-year program to address all the clean water getting into their collection system. They spent $15 million over those 12 years, really trying to tighten their system up and keep all that clean water from getting in, which was. Impacting their treatment facility, not unlike what is going on at the City of Sandy. Of that 15 million, we estimated, and this is back in, in, you know, early $2,000, but around 15% of that was spent on. Private lateral replacement or rehabilitation. So around two and a half million of that 15 million was spent on the private side. Assets. The city decided to fund all of that. We estimate just through the years of doing this work and the studies that have been done across the country. That when you add the private laterals, it is at least three times, if not more, in terms of the cost effectiveness of it. So let me phrase that a different way. City of Sweet Home spent 15% more to get the reductions that they saw. In order to get the same reductions, if they did not include private laterals, it would have cost them 40 million. And that's our estimate based on how important it is or how cost effective it is to add the private side laterals. And since that time, that work was completed in 2013. We've seen similar type findings with the City of St. Helens, City of Portland. And there is similar type work currently underway with Lake Oswego, Oregon City, Clackamas County. So a lot of folks have really embraced the idea, we need to address the private laterals for cost effectiveness.
I'd like to ask a question. Rob, in those cities, how old was their system? And I'm thinking that Sandy's had a tremendous amount of ingrowth in the last, call it 10 years. One of the fastest growing cities, which means we got a lot of current and new systems in those laterals. I'm in one of those parts of the city where it's relatively older, back in the 70s and 80s. My character house was built in the, in the late 90s. So I just wonder how much does that compare to what the City of Sandy is in? Is it similar, much older, much newer?
So Sweet Home was a little bit older in terms of the age of the system plus the, the growth. They were more of a bedroom community, plus they had the old paper mill down there. Most of the system was 1960s vintage. The thing we did do with the, the Sweet Home Program is we inspected the laterals anytime we came across a newer pipe material. Like gasketed plastic pipe, we said, let's not spend dollars there and let's not, and again, the city funded the private lateral work. But yeah, just the decision not to do any work on, on the newer, the newer pipe material, which we know is going to be a lot less likely to allow clean water in.
So where do you put Sandy at? Do you, you think we're? Half, twice as good? Or twice as good?
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to go there. Well, so the prioritization of the collection system work is really focused on basins. Two and eight, and that might not mean a lot. It's generally the older parts of town. And so our anticipation is there's a correlation between the age and the material of the collection system with. Where a lot of the clean water is getting in. And so we do anticipate that a lot of the laterals in these priority areas. Are going to be older material that leaks a lot.
And there is a, a. Figure in the staff report that shows basins two and eight, basins two and eight. The two that are green in color and, you know, eight is pretty much everything. East of Bluff, south of the highway, in the No Name Creek Basin. And so, yeah, the, you know, range of housing there. By varies from 80-year-old to 40-year-old housing. So that's probably where the, you know, and I think the flow monitoring we did two years ago. For that out, these are the places that have the highest. You know, the ice ratio between dry weather and wet weather flow, and this is where we're going to concentrate our.
Counselor Lee. Counselor Lee, you're muted right now.
I thought I unmuted, sorry. I wanted to ask Mike a question. Mike, do you? Have a preference between one or two, or what's the difference from your perspective to choose one or the other?
Two would be very staff intensive. We, we'd spend a lot of money. With, on surveys, legal descriptions, recording documents, you know, purchasing the laterals, you know, some, you could purchase it for a nominal amount. Like a dollar and rehab it and then sell it back. The DQ won't let you use public funds for that. So. I, I think one is the way to go.
Thank you.
One?
Yes, where the city would pay. The entire cost of rehabbing the public, the private lateral. And we would find some way to, we'd find private financing for that, and we just wouldn't borrow as much money from D, from the state.
Okay, Counselor Schultz.
Are you able to provide any sort of? Dollar figure of what this would cost a property owner?
Yeah, Mike, I don't know if you want me to take that.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah, I think it all depends on the condition of the, the lateral and then the. Restoration requirements, like is it going under, you know, a mature tree or landscaping or retaining wall, but. Generally speaking, in the 2,000, 2,500 range is probably typical, maybe get up to closer to 3,000. Per, per lateral, but it's not an insignificant amount for homeowners.
Mike, I apologize. I, I might be confused. I'm going to return to the last question. Because the, the staff report, and maybe I'm asking it out of context, because the staff report says. For these reasons, we recommend that the council only consider options three and four. You're recommending option one?
Yeah, I did kind of touch on it briefly in my intro that. After we spoke with Rob and kind of explained that we wouldn't be doing every lateral, we'd just be doing every. Lateral that was, you know, with the materials that are more likely to be leaky and. So.
Okay.
Be doing, doing all the private laterals with this funding or with private funding. Would probably be the most cost-effective way. And then, you know, it's, then they have the issue of like, we just doubled the grades. Do we want to? You know, have some people pay two to $3,000 to replace their lateral as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion or more discussion? I guess this is a works session, so no motion, but what are we feeling?
I'm pretty uncomfortable with having people pay that right now. So if we can find a way to make it work with the city doing it, I'd prefer that.
Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really. Sensitive about how much people are paying right now and the fact that we're all. Focused on this coronavirus with people losing their jobs and all the rest of things. It's just like it's a watershed moment to be able to expect. People to start throwing more money into wastewater when we've already, as Mike said. So I think unless we are going to have struggles ourselves getting into some of the financing. And my guess is that 21, we're probably going to be fighting a little bit of some of that with all the reduction in the way that people are making money and. And I just struggle with it, but I guess I'm much more willing to accept the city taking on the bulk of that. And number one being the alternative I would support versus putting anything on the back of folks at this point.
Yep, that, that's where I'm at as well. And I'm feeling like that's the general direction. If you are opposed to it being number one, go ahead and feel free to unmute yourself and to speak. Okay, great. Looks like, so that's the recommendation from council. With that, I am going to adjourn the work session until 7 o'clock. Thank you.
We're recording.
And I will call the city council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation
There's a lot of belly shots there.
Are you commenting on the size of the bellies or the?
I, I just stating.
With this quarantine, they don't make these monitors big enough.
All right, well, we'll go ahead. Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Councilor Pete's hold.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin. Councilor Lee.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Welcome, everybody. Per standard procedure, I'll start with the review of tonight's agenda. We'll start with any calls for changes to the agenda. We'll then go into public comment. For those of you wanting to participate in public comment this evening, there will be a separate opportunity for public comment on the Bailey Meadows Development Agreement later this meeting. Also note, the open record period for the Bailey Meadows Appeal Decision ended on May 4, 2020. The council welcomes your comments. Please see the instructions below on the agenda, which are if you're participating online, I'll go through all that when it's that time. We'll then go to the consent agenda. Under New Business tonight, we have that development agreement with Geo Development LLC. As I mentioned, we will be opening up for public comment on Bailey Meadows and that development agreement specifically at that time. Under Old Business, we'll have the Bailey Meadows Subdivision Appeal, utility assistance program, a 90-day review of that, as well as a transit operations contract authorization. We'll then go to a report from our city manager. We'll have committee and council reports, and then we'll adjourn for the evening. With that, is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. A reminder that there'll be a separate item during the development agreement portion to speak on that. Otherwise, the council welcomes your comments. If you're participating online, please click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. With that, I will pause, and Jeff, let me know if anyone would like to speak.
Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion?
I'm going to accept the consent agenda with the changes we talked about in the work session.
There is a motion by Councilor Schultz, a second by Councilor Lee, that we accept the, the consent agenda with the proposed changes to the minutes. All those in favor, well, we'll roll. Jeff, will you please go roll?
Councilor Pete's hold.
Hi.
Councilor Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin.
Hi.
Councilor Lee.
Yes.
Councilor Exner.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz. Mayor Pulliam.
Yes. All right, motion passes. With that, under New Business, Development Agreement with Geo Development LLC. My guess is Jordan, would you like to kick us off with that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Would you prefer to take public comment before the staff report? Or would you like me to do the report and then open it up for comment?
Why don't we proceed with a staff report? We'll go to public comment. And then if there's anything you would like to clarify after public comment, I will go to you then, and then we'll go to a council discussion.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you. So, good evening, council. Tonight before you is the proposed development agreement with Geo Development. And this agreement is essentially an outcome of several months of periodic negotiations with the developer as the application proceeded through the different land use stages. And it incorporates the developer's final proposed condition that was submitted after your deliberations on the appeal on April 20. I just want to start with some thanks and appreciation to Kelly and his staff in the planning department for handling this land use application process. I think they've done a great job. And also thanks to Mike Walker and Public Works too, for their help on the public improvements pieces and the calculations on SDCs and the costs estimates for the road. And then, of course, I can't forget David Doofman, who put in most of the work in drafting this agreement. So I really appreciate all his help, and he's in the meeting tonight too, to help answer questions and clarify anything that you might have. So some background and the purpose of this development agreement, really cutting to the, to the chase here is it's for construction of Gunderson Road. And this agreement was a kind of an idea that sprang out, out of the initial proposal for this land use application, where we started to hear about the concerns from the neighborhood about a second access and achieving a connection in that area, a secondary connection back to Highway 211. And so the idea of forming a development agreement was sort of this creative idea, how we can come together with the developer and see how we can achieve this and address some of those primary concerns. And at the same time, through that process, the opportunity to have that parkland dedication came up too, with some of the remnant land that would be left with the construction of the Gunderson Road connection. Also, the reality is that without an agreement and with an Aluba appeal, the subdivision has a strong chance of being built without a second access. And that would push all the construction activity and the neighborhood traffic through Lewis Avenue and through the Nicholas Glen neighborhood, and we wouldn't get the parkland dedication either. We've talked about this and the numerous hearings with the planning commission, the city council, and, and those reasons. But, you know, we viewed this development agreement as a pragmatic approach to something we've been talking about for a while. And that's, you know, how do we manage growth in Sandy and development in the city in a way that we can maintain our, you know, neighborhood character and our culture and, and not having our residents face the full brunt of that development activity. So, you know, in a nutshell, what we're trying to do is make a bad situation a little bit better. And judging by the fact that, looking at the public comments and, and then through the negotiations, that frankly, nobody is really happy about this, is a good indicator that maybe we've arrived at a compromise to accomplish both everybody's goals. And I think the existing residents of Nicholas Glen and the folks in the surrounding neighborhoods there, and the future Sandy residents that would be in this new neighborhood, would appreciate the additional access to 211 as well as the parkland. So to summarize the key points, as I'm going through the staff report, the developer would construct Gunderson Road, and the city in exchange would provide transportation system development charges, credits and surplus credits in exchange for that construction. The city would also set the building plan review fee at $300, which provides a discount and a savings to the developer. It's about $70,000. So that would allow the resources for the developer to build the Gunderson Road connection. And then the developer is proposing to dedicate to the city 2.3 acres for future parkland, which is here on this, I think this map was made by Kelly, so thank you for this nice illustrated map. But that, that land there is about 2.3 acres for, for a future park. The pink line is new Gunderson Road. This is about, I think, an acre more than what the city code would require for a subdivision. And then something new that was included in this development agreement is that the developer would apply to ODOT. And we think there's a strong likelihood that it would, it would, they would be successful in using Gunderson Road, the new right-of-way, as construction access for building the new subdivision. And I know that was also an issue for the existing neighborhood and an area for reducing the impact of that activity on those folks. So the, the developer would pay the city $500,000 as a cash contribution towards the Highway 211 improvements and intersection with Gunderson Road. So there's two components to this important connection. There's the Gunderson Road, and then there's also the Highway 211 improvements that need to be made, and also the intersection with the new roadway. The cost estimate for the highway intersection and the highway improvements range between 1.5 million and 1.8. Those are two different estimates, one from the developer and one from the city. And so we, in this agreement, split the difference at 1.7. And I wanted to address some information that's out there about the costs and the impact to the city. You know, this is a, this would be a street project, so the city would be responsible for funding the, the majority portion of the Highway 211 improvements. But this would come from the street fund. So to, you know, basically clear up that, you can't use street fund money on other things, right? So it's gas tax money, it's motor vehicle fees, it's, you know, the transportation system development charges. And so those need to be used on transportation projects, roads, streets. And so they can't be spent on things and other services like a pool or public safety, et cetera. So if the costs come in near the cost estimate, which, you know, we're, we're thinking they would, especially given the change in the economy, we might even see favorable bids when this gets to construction. We'd be looking at a cost of the city of 1.2 million, but the developer contributing, you know, half a million towards that project. And then also, in terms of SDC credits, you know, it's important to note that SDC charges and credits don't exist unless the development's actually built. So in other words, they're not, it's not cash that the city is giving to the developer. It's, we just wouldn't be collecting the SD, the transportation SDC charges for the Bailey Meadows Development. And in terms of the surplus credits, this is a, a practice that is done by other cities that other cities actually in the Clackamas, in Clackamas County as well. And these are credits that the developer would get and then need to use or sell within 10 years of this development. And so they would expire after that. Other developers would then use those credits to build, you know, other developments and infrastructure within Sandy. So there are some conditions that this agreement is contingent upon with this development. There's, there's been several of these, and the development agreement is no, no different from that trend. We still need the final approval for the UGB expansion that is slated for the Clackamas County Board on June 3. And then the developer must also receive the final approval from city council to annex that UGB property, and that is being tentatively planned for June 15. The developer must receive the final approval from, or the, I'm sorry, the city then must obtain jurisdiction over Highway 211, which we are waiting for the Department of Justice to do their final review. I believe there are a little backlog right now with coronavirus related issues, but we're, we're hopeful that can happen within the next six months. It's, the weight is more on the ODOT and the state side. And then there's a couple other actions that the city needs to take. We need to amend our capital improvement plan or transportation capital improvement plan to add Gunderson Road and the Highway 211 as a project. And we could do that as early as June 15 as well. And then we need to amend our municipal code, chapter 1528, to allow the surplus credits and the transfer of credits. And I believe we can also do that by June 15 as well.
Hold up. If you go back to that back slide, and I'm sorry to do this for you. It's just, council, on this slide, I mean, there's a lot here. So is there any questions from members of council on any of these conditions to clarify before we move forward? Okay, all right, great. Okay, just trying to make sure. Mine is, I just have a comment, Jordan, and that is, is if we got to do it in our work session in June, fine. But I, I would like to give a little bit more attention from council on surplus credits, what those programs look like in other communities, and really thoroughly talk about that in a work session before we just say, we think that that looks pretty in this agreement, so we should just do it.
Mayor, question?
Yeah.
Clarification anyway. I had myself muted. On the taking jurisdiction of the 211, as I understand it, that's the entire piece of 211 from 26 out to this junction, correct? We are taking over?
That's right.
Jurisdiction. So it's more than just the intersection that we were taking on? We were taking on maintenance of that portion of the highway? Responsibility for anything that happens on that road, is that correct?
That's right.
ODOT would be removing. And then there are, and I don't want to go into detail, but there are concessions from ODOT that they would be giving us some things as well, correct?
That's right. So in the, the draft agreement, and this was before the city council a couple of years ago. So we've been renegotiating with ODOT over the last several months. But they would be providing the city with half a million dollars for projects along that stretch of 211 and maintenance. There's ADA improvements that, you know, need to be made, certain intersections along that stretch. But they've also committed to improving our controllers in, on another state highway, Highway 26. And so that is part of the commitment from ODOT with the jurisdiction transfers. They'll be making those controller improvements, upgrades.
So is there timeline sequencing that needs to happen with that? Or does, could that happen after this is all in place?
Well, we're still waiting from the letter from ODOT about that commitment. But initially, it was a summer that we were going to get those improvements. And really, as soon as the council takes action on it, then that, you know, is our portion of the bargain. And then ODOT has their own process for approving the jurisdiction transfer that takes, is what takes the time. But we're still, ODOT still needs to get us the final draft. And then also, you know, the commitment for when that, the controllers will be installed. Like I said, initially, we were hearing it was summer, which would be great. So.
So that's another step in there that I don't see on the list, so okay, I get it.
I've got a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So, Jordan, as far as the intersection improvements with the ADA, are we talking 211 and Pioneer, or are we talking Debarco and 211?
I don't, I don't think Mike's on anymore, but I believe that ODOT is planning on doing the 26 intersections this summer.
Okay.
I believe it's a summer. I know it's coming up. So I think, I think a lot of those will be taken care of coming up.
The intersections that are in the jurisdiction transfer agreement are Debarco and 211, and Village and 211, and Arlington 211. But, you know, I think the ADA improvements would probably be less than $40,000 or $50,000.
What, what are those, Mike, do you know?
To replace the ramps, the existing ADA ramps at those intersections.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, tougher, tougher in mining in 211 as well. So there's like five.
Go ahead, Jordan.
So, you know, just to kind of bring a conclusion to this, you know, staff believes this development agreement is the best path forward for funding and then constructing a second access to the subdivision. And, and really, back to the original idea here, is we're trying to reduce impact to our existing residents, have a, you know, important street connection that was identified in their TSP, be constructed with this development. you know, and provide more access for that area as development continues, that portion of town. And then, you know, the reality is that we would probably see an outcome, you know, if it went to a Luba appeal and without the development agreement of the subdivision being approved and built without a second access and without the parkland. And this, you know, would have concerns for us in terms of that safety of that neighborhood and the new neighborhood. And then the increase of the cost for the city to someday try to make that connection in the future and go through UGB process and et cetera. But, you know, I do want to recognize this is a pretty unusual process. And, you know, it's been a very contentious and difficult land use process that has been going on for quite a while. And adding the appeal to it and everything has made this pretty complex and confusing and, you know, and, and some strong emotions on, in all sides. But I think, you know, Sandy has had a history of trying to do the unusual thing. And while these kind of non-statutory dome agreements aren't, you know, this isn't the first one that's been done. They're not that typical. And I think that kind of represents sort of the, you know, the approach of being pragmatic in this town and trying to do something that again is managing our growth in a way that we think, you know, maintains our characters of our neighborhood and do it in a way that, you know, we're just not letting development happen without our participation. So, you know, staff is recommending that the council approves this development agreement with Allied Homes and Development or Geo Development and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. So this time I can either, if we want to take more questions now, or if you want to take the public comment, either way.
I had one more question now that I see the end of your slide. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be a good time to go through some original councillor questions for staff before we go to public comments. So go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, I didn't, can you go back one slide because I didn't see it on there? And, and it was in, one of the pretty important ones was the Gunderson construct, Gunderson Road Construction Access on there is one of the, I'm not seeing that on your, your list, but that was one of the statements as well, that they would have the construction of the development going out to 211 versus going down Meliss Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the, the points in the development agreement that the developer will apply for construction access. We think there's, you know, a really good chance that's going to happen. I don't see any barrier to that. So they would use Gunderson, the new right of way for all their construction activity for that neighborhood development, which I think would be great for the adjacent neighborhood especially. So that's not a condition. It's actually just a, an article in the actual agreement.
Any other councillor questions? I can't see your hands the way we're doing this, so you, you may just need to speak up councillors.
Yes, thank you. I haven't been on the council except close to two years. So I hadn't heard much about the agreement with ODOT before. But to me, it sounds like this is a natural progression of that agreement with ODOT that to take over the highway, we knew we were always going to have to have some kind of transition to the highway to further develop the city. Am I correct in that assumption?
I can speak to that.
Me too.
I, I know that that was one of the goals since I've been on council was to take ownership of that to allow for some of the other construction and development that we would like to do. And so that's been a goal for the council for a long time. The last time it came up, it didn't look as favorable, looks a lot more favorable from what I've heard in the last five minutes than what was last presented to us a few years ago. So excited to see that change a little bit as well.
Thank you.
Just, just so you know, to add that real quickly, I voted against it when we looked at it two, three years ago. There are some additions to this particular agreement that weren't in the previous one, but it's still not going to bring our road system up to the kind of standard I'd like to see. We've got one of the, one of the most dangerous crick crossings on the Highway 20, 211 in the city. And it just will not be fixed with this particular agreement. So I have some concerns about this, but it's like swallowing a, some, I don't know how I make the simile work, but it's just not a very good swallow, but I'll, I'll swallow it anyway.
I'll tell you this, so councillor Exner, is us having control and power over that intersection gives us a lot more of a probability of getting something significant done there than if we're pushing another body who oversees the jurisdiction to do it for us.
And that was what was driving us to take ownership of it was that intersection and that exact crossing because of the rate of what it would cost the state to do it versus what the city can do it.
Any other questions? Jordan, do you know, when did this property come into our UGB?
Believe it was in the last expansion and someone could correct me, 2015, is that right? 16?
2015, 16, and it, and it was, and it was, it was zoned residential, correct?
That's right.
So this is the, so a development in this property is the intended use? And it was created in the UGB expansion under previous years?
Just recently.
Just want to make sure that was clear, clarity, some clarity there. Thank you. Okay. With that, I think we can go ahead and go to some public comment. So council welcomes your comments on this agenda item for this development agreement with Geo Development LLC. Please see the agenda for instructions. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. When you are recognized, I will need you to state your name and address for the record. And you will have three minutes for public testimony. With that, Jeff, will you please guide us?
Okay, Mayor, thank you. The first hand that I saw raised was Linda Malone. You should be able to unmute yourself now and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Linda. Linda, I see that you're muted. Do you see that, Jeff?
Yeah, I can try to unmute her manually. Linda, let me know if that works. I'm trying to unmute you myself.
I can hear you, Linda. Go ahead.
17740 Bluff Road, Sandy, 97055. And I just have a couple of questions. I've been following this in the, you know, complaint zone about how the city is giving away quite a bit of their road improvement dollars. And I noticed on the previous slide, the one that Jeremy had you pull back up, it talks about adding Gunderson Road to the, to the current list of projects that they want to do. What projects would be eliminated or a project would be eliminated in order to accomplish this giveaway of improving Gunderson Road? What thing are we not doing? Because we're not finding an extra, you know, even as Mike said, the $40,000 for each of the intersections that are going to require ADA improvements, that's going to eat up almost half. If there's five of them, that's $207,000. That's going to eat up almost half of the $500,000 they're giving us to make improvements to Highway 211. And I just don't know where we're going to find the extra money in our transportation master plan. It was stated that Gunderson Road was in the transportation master plan, but it also states that you're going to be re, adding it to the current plans for what you're going to build or what you're going to improve in the coming biennium. So what's being eliminated or do you have something picked out to eliminate in order to insert Gunderson as one of the projects? And that would be, you know, my main concern is, is the precedent it sets for giving away so much of the actual a previous, I know, and this has probably been eliminated in the city's thing since I left, but a previous thing was it developed would pay for itself. And I know that you're requiring the additional access point in order to ease the impact on other local, you know, neighborhoods adjacent to this to try and make it so it's more palatable, palatable to them. But if I was someone who had been required under previous, like Arleetha Cord and others, required to do the improvements, and now you're giving another 100 houses a break and saying they don't have to do all the improvements that I was required to do on my development. I see some inequity in that. And I'm not sure we're getting as much back on our, on our, you know, as much bangs for our dollar doing it that way. And I think the impact will be greater than what is being planned for. That's it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Linda. And Jordan, would you like to kind of take this in a staff report summary at the end of testimony rather than, you know, some of these questions that might come forward? Do you want to just use your time at the end?
Sure, either way is fine. Yeah.
Okay, let's just go ahead and do that then. Jeff, further public testimony.
Okay, the next hand that is raised is Michael Robinson. And Mr. Robinson, you should be able to unmute yourself now or, yep, there you are. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Michael Robinson. The last name is spelled R-O-V-I-N-S-O-N. My mailing address is 1211 Southwest Fifth, Suite 1900, Portland 97204. And I'm speaking on behalf of Geo Development and Cody Buggan, and Cody's watching and listening to this. So Mayor, you have a short letter that I sent to you earlier today. We obviously agree with the staff report, and I think Jordan said it well. Probably nobody thinks this is the perfect deal, but given what we're trying to achieve, it's, it's a good deal. And I think the staff report described it as a, as a fair compromise, and we feel that way as well. Let me just say two things in my, in my, a couple of things in my three minutes. First of all, there's a couple of important reasons we think the council can follow the staff recommendation and approve this. One is it's a fair and equitable solution for the council to obtain the construction of Gunderson Road and the dedication of parkland. There, you know, Mayor, goes without saying, land use is not a great system for resolving things like this. But we worked hard with your staff, with Jordan, Kelly and Dave, to try and find a better way to find a solution to this. We're comfortable with this as the developer. We're comfortable spending the money and making improvements on Gunderson Road and then providing parks. Secondly, it achieves the things that the neighbors have said they wanted, including the construction access. That candidly was something that my client offered up over the last couple of weeks. And it makes a lot of sense to me, and I hope it does to you as well. And lastly, as Jordan said, the use of PSDC credits, transportation system development charge credits, is something that's pretty common. And I think the staff report does a nice job of explaining why it's common and how it gets used. So honestly, we think this is a good solution. I'm confident not everyone likes it. But given what we have to work with in terms of the laws and the facts, we're comfortable with this. We think it's a fair allocation of resources by the city and the applicant. And we're happy that we can do something that, that we think benefits the city and the neighbors. So we hope that you approve the DA because it's a good solution to a problem that frankly, as Jordan said, doesn't have a lot of great solutions. So thank you for taking the time to consider this. We hope when you vote, the judge will approve the DA. And we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Jeff, further public comment.
Okay, the next hand raised is someone signed in as Rich. And you should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, my name's Rich Shaw. I live at 37552 Rachel Drive, Sandy, Oregon. Hey, I want to start out by saying, of course, the developer agrees with this is because this is what's making them money. They wouldn't agree to this if they weren't, so of course they are. And with that, $1.2 million is still $1.2 million. By giving SDC credits, we are simply kicking a can down the road. We, that is still $1.2 million that the city is not going to have to make some improvements. We've gone from being the second, I believe we're the second fastest, I keep hearing said, growing city in the state of Oregon. We're definitely in the top 10, yet just now, with all of the growth that we've had, we're just now having to deal with this and having to bear the burden as citizens to pad the developer's pocket. It just doesn't seem right. It doesn't pass the straight face test. Um, one thing that isn't addressed in there that was addressed in Mr. Jordan's letter is it talks about the, if it comes under $1.7 million. It talks about how dollar for dollar, I believe, is how it essentially says, the first $100,000 will be credited to the developer, and then after that they get 25%. This is all because of unprevailing wages, I'm sorry, using the prevailing wages on the back. So here we are, again, padding the developer's pocket even more at the cost of potential residents' jobs. These are, these are, regardless to how you feel about union jobs, the prevailing wage is what it is, and it should be paid to the citizens, not to the developer. And, and this whole thing from the start to the beginning, from Mobley on and on, just doesn't seem to pass a straight face test, and it's going to cost us something. And I think as citizens, we should understand exactly what you're putting that one point, what you're taking that $1.2 million from and putting it to, especially so that we can make informed decisions come November. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate your time. Jeff?
Okay, and now we have Kathleen Walker. You should be able to unmute yourself and please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kathleen Walker, 15920 Southeast Bluff Road, Sandy, Oregon. I sent you a letter today, kind of this morning, actually concerning a lot of the points here. The fact that this is all done under a non-statutory agreement, which means it was all done in secrecy. I don't understand why that was. It doesn't look good for the city of Sandy when we operate in secret. There's state statutes requiring development agreements to be transparent and public. And the fact that you kind of went around those rules and did this secretly is not a good, it just adds to the, the stinkiness of this. I wish it was only $1.2 million. We're actually also giving them credit for the entire $700,000 of Gunderson Road, which was actually originally located on their property and not outside the UGB. I guess the question, and then the point I'd like to make is that the whole rationale that you all used here was this risk of a Luba appeal. Despite the fact that we had Southeast Village Boulevard, just a third of a mile down the road, built by the developer, including the turn lane on Highway 211. I can't imagine that a Luba appeal is going to cut, and, and going ahead and building the road ourselves would cost more than $2.5 million. What we've done here is that we've asked the developer for what the road is going to be cost, cost. And then given their, their own road construction costs, we're asking them to go ahead and build it without any competition. And then we're going to pay them rewards if they build the road for less than their estimate. So of course, my prediction, as well as Rich's, is that they will be, you know, building this road for slightly less than their inflated estimates and getting, you know, at least another $100,000 of reward money. And, and this is all, as we all know, this isn't, you know, taking money from the pool or something like that. This is coming out of really important road projects that are going to benefit entire, the whole entire city and not just one neighborhood. Of course, we agree the road should be built, but like the Southeast Village Boulevard developer, we feel that this developer should be, should have been paying for that, paying for at least most of it. I have no doubt Mr. Robinson already has some additional customers lined up to take us to, you know, to threaten us another Luba appeal in order to get even more money out of us in the future. And I'm really concerned about the comments that you made, you know, Jordan, about how this is, you know, kind of what we're going to have to do in the future. We can't afford to pay for developers' roads when it's their responsibility. It's, it's, we've never had to, and I don't believe that that's where we should be now. I think that a lot of this has to do with our business friendly emphasis that we've had lately, and I'm really concerned about that. I, I hope you all can turn that around and really kind of focus on resident friendly. I don't think that this is really in the best interest of our residents or our roads funds. So I, I think that you need to kind of, pay for it yourself, pay for it ourselves. So rather than having developers pay for it.
That has been three minutes. Thank you very much.
Jeff, when we hit three minutes, let's please mute. I am happy to hear that Ms. Walker realizes that we can't, that we're not paying for the road out of swimming pool funds. I'm pretty active on social media and other channels, but it's silent when that, when that has come forward. So I've, I've found that to be interesting. I am relieved to hear that she realizes that. Jeff, continue on with public comment, please.
I don't currently see any more hands raised, Mayor. We could give it maybe one, just a few more seconds. Mayor, I do not see any more hands raised.
Thank you. Okay. So moving.
Oh, there is one more, Mayor. I'm sorry. Just came at the very last moment.
Absolutely. Let's hear it, please.
This is someone signed in as Jim. You should be able to unmute yourself now. This is someone signed in as Jim. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Marie DiBatti. I'm at 37176 Rachel Drive. I'm, you know, with all this coming out, like, from the last meeting to this meeting, we got a paragraph of what, what the developer said he was going to do was $500,000 is what he was going to contribute. But it was very confusing to me, and I know a lot of people in the neighborhood, what that was all about. And, excuse me, the last meeting that we met at, Stan and the council had voted against this project. And then they went to a lawyer and we did all this stuff with the developer. And next thing you know, we're paying millions of dollars. The, the city is paying all this money. And it, and it just went from black to whites so drastically. It's like, can you guys explain to us what you're doing? And do you know what you're doing? And also, why are you, why are you not allowing Cody to build, pay for this road? All the other developers have paid for theirs, and I don't understand how that is getting manipulated. And Jordan, when you explained everything, it is just for this one development, all that confusion of the 26th to 211. It's like this one development is changing everything. And where's that money coming from? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Jeff, I see, it looks like we have another hand up.
We do, yes. This is Laura Williams. You should be able to unmute yourself now. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. It's not, it's Marko Lane. I'm on her computer. My address is 37828 Rachel Drive, Sandy, Oregon. And I'm another concerned resident who lives in Nicholas Glen. And I've, I too have been following the whole case. There's just a whole bunch of questions, questions of ethics, questions of, you know, where are the money coming from? Not different, you know, offices or different inputs or different outfits. I'm looking at the bottom line as well, you should be. And there's a $2.7 million deficit, and it's got to come from some. So even if it has to stay within the road system, then something else is not going to happen. There's also questions about Todd Mobley as the planning commissioner. My, my biggest question right now is, what is being done to close the loopholes that is leaving us susceptible for developers like Cody Bugan to extort the, the city for $2.7 million? That's my question. Is there any action? I, I'm aware of that PUDs, Planned Urban Developments, is another loophole area that is seriously lacking and needs tight wording that leaves the city susceptible to more lawsuits. And that's what I'm concerned about as well. This sets precedents. The next developer is going to come in, find a loophole, and see the city. And it's going to be millions and millions of dollars. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, I do not see any more raised hands.
Thank you, Jeff. With that, Jordan, would you like to do a staff recap?
Or, and be sure to remind me if I do miss anything.
We need to close the public hearing.
It's, it's not actually a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, so just to respond to a couple of things. You know, regarding this, you know, where the, where the money is coming from. And, you know, former Mayor Malone made some good points, and obviously she's savvy on city budgets and how they work. But within our street fund, we do have a balance of over $3 million coming in, that we had coming into this biennium. There's two projects that are, are big focus this year in the street fund and for the next couple of years. There's 362nd, and then there's the Ten Eyck Divisal Loop Sidewalk Project. Even with those projects, we have excess funds for additional projects. And, and, you know, I, you know, I hear the point about what other projects will not be done. That's a great question always asked when priorities get shifted. And the fact is, you know, we, we have a list of transportation system projects that were done in our previous TSP. None of those are really ready and, and ready to go in the hopper. Besides, you know, the projects that we're currently doing with 362nd being the big one. But, you know, this obviously moves up in the priority list because of circumstances when you have an opportunity to, you know, partner with the development that's occurring. This is basically saying that this becomes a priority for those funds. And we've, you know, done our street fund projections to make sure that even with the COVID increase on gas taxes, that there's, you know, going to be available resources to complete this project within the, the current biennium. And we also, you know, we're kicking off our transportation system plan update here pretty soon. Sort of kicked it off, but again, with the coronavirus, there's been delays at the state level. But that's a process that we're starting to, to update is, is that transportation system plan that will update the CIP list and also have the opportunity for the council to again, look at our transportation system development charges and what that fee is to pay for, you know, future improvement projects around the city. And so that is one of the things that, you know, we need to do, the council will need to do, is add Gunderson and Highway 211 to the, the, you know, the CIP list. It is a project that was in the TSP but not adopted into the actual master plan or the SDC capital plan. You know, the, the code change will be coming to the council, and that will be at a future meeting very soon. So that is something that staff is, is aware of and has been communicating about to make that change in our city code and make it more clear and objective. So we will address this so that, you know, we're, go find ourselves in similar issues in the future. And make sure that our code is more clear and objective in terms of, you know, average daily traffic volumes and requirements for transportation infrastructure. I think I addressed, you know, where the money is coming from and who is paying for the road. It's not a budget deficit. We do have the available funds. It's the redirecting of that, of those funds or allocating those funds for this project, which, you know, could have impacts on future projects in terms of when we get to, get to other projects that are on the transportation list. But like I said, there's not any other projects this year that are in the hopper that we won't be doing because of this. Some of those funds that we would receive from the jurisdiction transfer could be applied towards this project. So that's another source of funding that would, you know, be another resource for funding the Highway 211 improvements. You know, I, there's just a couple of comments in there. I don't, I don't want to address everything. I, you know, I think, only I just want to stress, especially to the folks that have been involved with this from the beginning, is that, you know, we really approached the development agreement as a way to be, I mean, honestly, like, to problem solve on how, you know, faced with this situation where our code was going to allow this, you know, development to go through without that access, how can we hear the neighborhood and come up with a way to, you know, get the developer to move on what was initially proposed? And, you know, listening to the public comment and using, you know, the testimony and the comments that we heard, really to leverage our position, made this, made this change. I mean, this development is much different than when it was initially proposed. The developers contributing funds towards the, the transportation projects. The Parkland dedication came, came with it, too, the construction access. So I think the public involvement has been very effective and has helped us on the city side in terms of negotiation. But, you know, this is kind of a questions I have had all along is, you know, I recognize there's this really complex, like sort of legal issue with the city code. And how to explain that, that we're in a situation where, you know, the legal advice and our code analysis is telling us that we don't have a very good shot of having the development that we want to see there. And given that it's zone residential, it's in our UGB, and they will, they're proposing the development initially that did not have that road. How do we get them to move the ball a little bit and have some skin in the game to build that, help build that road and that connection? Because, you know, again, we want growth to happen intelligently. We want it to happen that is consistent with what our values are. And we want it to happen in a way that's safe and adds to the connectivity of this town. And so, you know, I, I hope the folks in Nicholas Glen recognize what, you know, their involvement has meant to us and the change, you know, that they've, they've had in, in this proposal. And, you know, staff does, does appreciate that. And talked about the code fix coming up in a future meeting. You know, that's, you know, something that the council will have in front of them, hopefully, in, in the not-too-distant future, pretty simple fix, actually, hopefully, considering. And then, is there anything else? Any other questions, counsel, that I missed there?
It's good.
Okay.
I heard one statement about it being done in secret.
Yeah, I can, I can kind of talk about that, too. I recognize that, and I, I can actually appreciate some of that. The difficulty in these situations is you are negotiating sort of in real time that things are unfolding. And honestly, like, to conduct business in the open on something as complex and as sensitive as a development agreement where, I mean, David, how many different versions have we been through? How many different proposals? And if we were going to try to negotiate with 100 people involved, too, you're not going to make out of grounds. But you can probably speak to more of the kind of the legal, like what, you know, can be done in those situations. You have two lawyers involved. And it, you know, at times it was on again, off again, depending on, you know, where we're at in the land use process. And, you know, frankly, like, I think this has been a pretty robust public involvement process, considering how many public hearings we've had at the planning commission, the, you know, the, the neighborhood meetings, the, you know, the public comment that we didn't legally have to have for, for this development agreement. But the council wanting to hear from the public on this, that came directly from the council. So, you know, I understand it's, the, I think the short answer is there's a lot of sausage making that goes on in these things. And, you know, typically, we, you know, negotiate something in good faith with the, the applicant and the, and the attorneys, and then propose that to the council and the public for, for input.
That said, there's, there's no, the, the desire for Gunderson Road is not a new development that, that's been spoken about out in the public for quite some time. Go ahead, David.
Thanks, Mayor. I, the only thing I would add is just, it's really typical, too, when you think about the average contract that comes before the city council. You know, that, that, no matter what it is, and, and more often than not, it's, you know, has something that's not, you know, nearly as controversial as this, maybe, you know, more, more run-of-the-mill. But nevertheless, there's, you know, discussions that I'll have with all manner of senior staff about, you know, whatever they might be working on. And ultimately, that's done, and a final agreement is presented for the council for its, for its blessing and comment. And that's, that's really no different here, other than just, you know, there was a significant amount of, 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 you know, public concern over this, as Jordan, I think, said, that, that, that's understandable and makes sense. But the process itself is really no different than how we would normally arrive at this point in your decision-making process. Typically, the development agreements that I've been in have all been of this variety. These, they call non-statutory. There's a court of appeals decision from 2008 that addressed that and, and, and said that the provision of Chapter 94 that was cited in one of the letters is one way to do it, but it's not the only way. And there's, I, I addressed that before the planning commission back in, in February in a memo. So that's, it's one way to do it. It's not the only way. And the ones that I've been involved in have been very similar to this. In fact, typically, we would have them brought before a governing body after a decision is made on the underlying land use matter. That's been more common in my experience. But, you know, in this case, we all talked about it and said that these issues are so obviously front and center that we think it makes more sense to have this happen beforehand. And so that's how we got here tonight. But I, I don't think there was really anything that was unusual at all. And certainly, I would never characterize it as, as, as being secretive or behind the curtain. It's, it's pretty much consistent with how virtually all agreements a city council would, would, would handle and see them when they're basically in their, what staff would consider to be their final form.
Thanks, David. Okay, I'm happy to take further questions.
Any other questions, discussion?
I think we've been around this one for a while, so. Yeah, thanks, Jordan, for your, for your recap of all that. Appreciate it. And thanks, thanks, David, for the clarification on, on, on the negotiations. Appreciate that.
I guess I'll start off as well. I've watched this thing for, what, months now? Listened to so many different comments from my emails, text messages, listened to both sides of the contractor and the, and the planning department and the, all the other backs and forth, the lawyer. You know, in my mind, if there were a couple of other items that were a little bit stronger, I would vote against this thing. I, I don't think there's a lot of, of really great solutions here. They all seem to be a bit hard to swallow. And I tried to grapple with a kind of simile that I want to talk about. But it is like swallowing something much bigger than my normally big mouth can handle. If the possibility of winning in Luba would have been a little bit stronger, I, I would certainly have gone at that direction to say no. We'll just go ahead and let it happen. If the, we hadn't really been looking at trying to find a way to get another north-south transportation connection between the city of Sandy and the north to the south, that would have been something else that wouldn't have been as important in my mind as, as it can be in this particular area. If it wasn't for the fact that we were already well overwhelmed by the Melissa Road. Good luck. Be safe. And then if, so there's a number of issues there that if it had been just a little bit different, I'd, I'd be strong against this one. But because I see the progression of good versus bad, alternate versus alternate, I guess I'm still thinking that this is something that we should go ahead and swallow, go ahead and do. I think that there are a lot of things that are still at risk. We still have ODOT out there that we don't have our negotiations completed yet. But I get the part, once we become the owners of, or at least the jurisdiction responsibility for 211 will probably be stronger at some of these concerning junctions that still seem to not be able to get anything accomplished for. So I, I see lots of concerns. I see lots of issues. And man, I understand the reason for people to really be at arms on both sides of this thing. But for me, I'm still thinking that I haven't heard anything yet that tells me I, I really should switch, switch my belief. I think this is, take the big swallow. We'll probably come out of this one. Still thinking, maybe this is going to be some issues here, but I, I think it's the right thing to do.
Jordan, quick question. So there's a lot of conditions on this development agreement. And so the next step, obviously, this is tied very heavily into the Bailey Meadows Development Application. And so if we approve the development application later tonight, And so if we approve the development application later tonight, contingent on this development agreement, and then one of these conditions within the development agreement do not get met, like, let's say, for example, we can't come to an agreement with ODOT over the jurisdiction of 211. Then my understanding is the development agreement would then be null and void. And if that's the case, then would our approval of Bailey Meadows then be null and void and then rejected? And if not, how do we make it that way? Because I think a lot of us, especially me, I believed in my last vote, and I still strongly do, that I want to stand by our city code, that we need adequate facilities for a development. Now, it's looking like this could change, that we could have adequate facility, you know, a better adequate facilities for this development with the creation of this road and this intersection. So I want to make sure it would actually happen. So what recourse do we have if, if we don't get the road to make sure that this development, or, you know, to go back to rejecting this development?
Right. David, I might turn to you to kind of help explain. I think it's five, five, seven, the effective failure of the conditions and sort of what, you know, what it means if, if one of those conditions, like the jurisdiction transfer, or, you know, the UGB is kind of the next big milestone here on June 3rd. If that doesn't go through, then what does that mean in terms of Gunderson? And then, David, if you can, also, what does that mean in terms of what's next on the agenda after the development agreement?
Yes. So, right now, the way that the development agreement is structured is that, let's say that the UGB didn't happen or go through. The development, Gunderson couldn't be built because the UGB would not be, you need to have the UGB to have Gunderson as a road. So the way that's structured right now, and this is consistent with the planning commission's approval as well, is that the developer would be granting the city easements for the right-of-way. But the development itself, the subdivision itself, would be going forward. So that is something that, you know, we had a lot of discussions about with the, the applicant and the applicant's counsel. And, you know, as it's written right now, if there is a failure of that condition or another condition, the intent is that you would be getting right-of-way, but you would not be getting a road. The, there's, as ever with this project, legal risks in terms of having a condition that would say, we've got to have the UGB, we've got to have these issues be obtained or actually happen before, that those would all be conditions of approval of development of the subdivision or approval of the subdivision. But that's also something that, you know, with that knowledge and the fact that there is still that legal issue out there, certainly, I think if it means that, that that's ultimately what it, what it takes, if you will, for it to be approvable and for the council to be able to do that and, and have that as a condition that would say, basically, you know, if the UGB doesn't go through, then the subdivision is denied. It would be essentially a condition of approval that would be contingent upon those things happening. That that would be something to do ultimately in the subdivision deliberation itself. And that would be conditions that would be added or modified in the subdivision approval.
Okay. I, I believe I understand that. Does everybody believe they understand that?
Well, let me, let me make sure. So let's say that the negotiations with ODOT fall apart. We still have the ability to put the injunction in place. But if we decide that the negotiations aren't beneficial to the city, that would mean that the development would be denied or that the, the access through Gunderson would be undone or not completed. And it would still go through as far as the development out Melissa.
Well, so as the, as the, as the decision is written right now, and we're kind of transitioning a little bit to the, to the next step for the, this is kind of why we usually do these the other way, and that's totally fine. I'm not worried about that. You deserve to kind of have a full picture of this regardless of when it, you know, it's going to be. The, if, if, if 211 were to not happen, the way that the decision is, is drafted now, consistent with the development agreement, it ultimately reads the same way, is that the applicant could still go forward with the subdivision and build it out. And instead of getting a road, you'd be getting, you'd be getting right-of-way to a future Gunderson Road. You wouldn't have a, a road built. That's the way it is now. So if, if.
If we could change that, if we changed it, then what happens?
You could, you could certainly have a, a condition of the subdivision approval that would say, you know, the UGB has to happen. There's not a contingency, essentially. You've got to have the UGB. We've got to have highway, the 211 transfer. That can, that can be laid out in the subdivision approval. The risk is that the applicant will, will make the same argument that, well, you have no authority to be doing that. If you look closely at the proposed conditions, they've said all along that they're doing this to find a solution to a problem that they recognize, but they don't believe they're obligated to do that. So really, practically speaking, what I think that means is that there may be an appeal regardless, that they would file, at least to preserve that issue. But assuming the UGB goes, goes through, and assuming the transfer happens, those other conditions are met, I, I can't imagine they would actually, you know, go forward with the appeal. They kind of put it on a shelf and see what happens. But that's, that's out there. That risk is there. But, you know, if that's kind of, you know, the sort of universe that the council feels it has to, you know, make this decision in with, with that in mind, my sense would be that, you know, the, that we've, we've gotten this far, that the developer would probably want to have, even if it disagrees, that you can, you could, you could place those conditions on it that strictly, that it would prefer to have that with those conditions than having a denial. The denial doesn't really get them there either.
Okay.
So if, if, the, I'll phrase it this way. The developer cannot turn dirt until we have all these conditions completed and satisfied, clear through to ODOT. Is that right or not?
The, you mean, as far as their subdivision approval goes?
Yeah, David, I think what councillor Exer is worried about is you're going to get the developer in there building homes and then asking forgiveness later.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, normally, you don't, I mean, if you, if you have conditions of approval that, you know, that, I mean, this is just divorced from necessarily this particular subdivision. But there would be things that a developer can begin doing, you know, grading work, site work, et cetera, once there is an approval, that there may be things that are going to be coming up down the road that, that, in this case, it might be the 211 jurisdiction transfer, right? Normally, that would not be something that prohibits a, an applicant to, to begin the, the basics of plating a subdivision. So you, you'd need to have something that was a fairly unique new condition in order to make that happen. I'm not saying you can't get there. I just think it would be, you know, pretty different from what we've normally seen, even in the absence of something this unique.
Further questions and comments? Councillor Schultz?
Yeah, I am struggling with this quite a lot. I don't like the feeling that we're being strong-armed still. I can't quite get past that. And I understand that there's all these risks involved if we deny this application at this point. But I feel that there's also risks involved with us taking on this huge, potentially multimillion-dollar road project that we weren't planning on doing right now. And so I guess I'm struggling with that. I'm struggling with the precedent idea that this is going to set some sort of precedent for future developments or future projects. And just letting you know where I'm at with it. I understand everything that staff is saying. I really appreciate all the clarity and responses to all the questions that have been coming up, both for me and from people in the public. And I feel like I have a better understanding of why, why things are going in this direction and why this is the idea being presented to us. But I'm still struggling with it, and I'm not, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not convinced yet, I guess, that this development agreement is enough.
Thank you, councillor. Further comment? Councillor Pete Sol?
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments and from the public and from staff. And thank you for laying that out. I think, you know, from our previous conversation there, you know, making sure that a development has put adequate infrastructure in place and some of these other policies that I know I have become accustomed to on my tenure on council, as well as the planning commission before that. And then having, I know David explained to me and Jordan, you know, the rules have changed in Oregon. So what we have been accustomed to are no longer applicable in some ways. And this is why we are in the position we are in. And it doesn't always revolve around this type of thing, but other rules that the state mandates down from us. A perfect example is a while back in our annexation policies, the state basically eliminated a lot of the authority that cities had for determining whether annexations and what they did with annexations. In fact, removed it from being a vote of the people and had, you know, strict rules on, on what you had in place, but couldn't send it out to a vote. And that was hard to chew off and bite on as well back then. So in that, I know that the, no one likes the deal. I think Jordan put it that way. And in a lot of dealings of no one likes it, it's that maybe that's the, the better of them all is because no one's happy with it. We're never going to be 100% happy with that. That being said, I think there's several benefit things that we can look at getting out of this project at a reduced price from what we would have to have put in place. And so some of the other aspects of it, because of this, we were, didn't take that vote. You know, it said we took a vote, but we told us how, everyone told how they were feeling last time, how they were going to vote. And be, and then David chimed in with one of those new rule changes that said, now wait, the, the developer has another chance to take a stab at this. And so that was a new rule that I hadn't ever experienced before on that. And so that's another, one of those examples of how the state law changes on certain things. And, and, and we have no authority on some of that. But regardless of that, coming back to it, it's much better for the city than what it was at that time. And I think Stan had pointed that out at the beginning, and Jordan had pointed that out as well. But one of the understandings I had on this whole process was that the conditions were the conditions. When I hear conditions, meaning that that has to happen or it doesn't go through as part of the development. And so that was what my understanding of that was, is that they must meet those other conditions. It doesn't need to come into the UGB to be accepted as being approved. It needed to have the highway 211 transfer. The construction vehicles and those type of things did need to come off of 211, off of this new Gunderson Road, which one of, that was one of the key things that really appreciated coming out of that whole thing was that it wouldn't be coming down Melissa Avenue. So anyways, those were my comments on that. It sucks to be where we're at. No one likes it, obviously, from any side, but that's where we're at, and we will have to make a decision.
Thank you, councillor. All right, I'll, I'll give it an attempt to jump in here. So a couple of things. This is, this has not been an easy decision for council. Nobody, I mean, none of us ran here to start building. I've seen a lot written. No one ran for office to start building new subdivisions and to see our hometown start growing into a town and a city that we don't recognize anymore. This COVID-19 pandemic, it's changed a lot of us in the way we live our lives. For me, it means that I no longer get to run in an air-conditioned gymnasium anymore. It means that I have to go outside in the rain and run, and sometimes it's sunny, not as often as I like it. And my family's been going out and doing that with me, and I've talked a little bit about it during council meetings. And, and my kids are out front. We live in a neighborhood, Timberline Trails here in Sandy. And I've been reading all the comments. I know a lot of you. I, I see the pan. I see the attendees. I recognize a lot of the names. I recognize that our children, a lot of our children go to school together. We see each other at the store. I grew up with some of you. Where we sit, you know, I, as I'm out with my kids, I, every time a car drives by, I'm looking over my shoulder, looking ahead, and I'm screaming, "Car!" The truth is, my heart stops every time. I got someone I work with in their 70s that care a lot about, who's out walking around on our streets a lot. The traffic through our community is getting more and more extreme every day. None of us want to see traffic going through our neighborhoods. This proposed development, without this addition of Gunderson Road, was three to four times the amount of traffic was being projected beyond what was suitable in our DSP. And it was a big reason why a lot of us were talking about denying it this last time through. The truth of the matter is, is I would ask some of our neighbors that are watching tonight to put yourselves into our shoes, because we're your neighbors. We're not paid to be here. What we do is, is we sit here in judgment, and people apply to do things, and we listen to our neighbors, and we think about what we do and what our lives are like as residents. And we read our code, and we try to run the best decisions possible. And where we sit tonight is that we have an application in which our attorney tells us the case law in Oregon has changed. That a lot of the standards that we cite, the standard that I just cited, three to four times the amount that we find acceptable in traffic conditions, that those all have to be specifically mentioned within our code. And that case law has changed over the course of the last year, but with some other communities in Oregon, as how Luba has decided those things. And so from the get-go, the applicant has said that they do not need to build this route, that our code is not up to snuff, does not meet the legal challenge that would come. And as a result, they have no obligation to build the road, and they would get the development. And so we're sitting here as council, and we're saying, okay, it's looking like we're probably going to get a development, a new housing development either way. We're either going to reject it, we're going to go to Luba, our attorney told us we're going to have a hard time there. And then we're going to end up with a development that's unsafe, without an additional Gunderson or intersection. They're all going to be starter, family homes, young kids riding around on their bikes with cars speeding by. Or we can try to come, we're not happy about this. Or we can try to come into an agreement with the developer, who believes that they don't need to pay anything. And we pushed, and we pushed, and we pushed, and we said we were going to reject it if he didn't. And he agreed to put over $500,000 towards the road, which made it a lot easier on our budget. Anyone, I see myself getting attacked constantly on social media. But anyone who's watched anything that I say or like campaign on understands that transportation traffic is a huge priority of mine. I want to build roads. That's what I've proposed doing. Jordan mentioned 362nd Bell Street. One of my single biggest priorities. It's a gut shot. This Gunderson Road was not something that was ever on my radar screen. Why is it now? It is now because we want a safe neighborhood. We see a neighborhood that's going to get built, whether we like it or not, and it either gets built unsafe or it gets built safely. And now we believe that we have the developer willing to put enough money towards the road that we could adequately find the funds within our city to pay for it, so that we can have, you know, a safer neighborhood for our current residents, as well as people that are moving here in the future. And that's where we sit today. And that's the judgment. It's not a fun judgment that we're going to have to make here tonight, either on this development agreement or on the Bailey Meadows subdivision. It's not easy, but I do believe that our council and our staff, you know, if people ask what has changed or is different, I say what is I say what is different is, is that past councils and past staff would have just said, maybe, they might have just said no. And then it would have gone to Luba, and then it would have lost after spending taxpayer money fighting it. And then we would have ended up with a neighborhood without Gunderson Road, that's less safe. And a child or someone else walking might have gotten killed by a car. And we've heard what our neighbors have said, council has decided to take the extra step. To try to make this Gunderson Road happen for safety reasons. And that's where we sit at tonight. So I, I'm for it. I'm for the development agreement. I would like, as we get into this next discussion, I do not want this city to be in a position where. We don't, one of the conditions are not satisfied, and so then we end up with that scenario I just gave. Where we have a development, at least that we didn't even try to stop, that happens without the road. So I would want. Even if we still feel we're going to lose at Lubecore anyways, I would still want to make a condition on a no. Because I do believe that our city code should be sufficient. I said that the last time that I believe our facilities were not adequate. But I do believe now that our facilities are becoming adequate, because we do have resources that I did not believe that would have at the time, have now. Presented to have them. So anyways, that's where I sit. I'd like to move forward with this. Further questions and comments or motions?
A comment. Sounded like we were going to talk about these conditions and just to see how specific they have to be before things fall apart. Is that what our next step would be? Or is it some sort of a motion? Because I, for one, I think either one of these conditions need to be accomplished. I don't see us.
So Dave. So David, David, tell me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, is we would move forward with this development agreement. And then any conditions we would put on the development for this, you know, road to be built, we would do at that time, you know. When we take up the Bailey Meadows development. Is that correct, David?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that is correct, Mayor. And, and the only one thing I would say is that you would, you would probably, as part of a motion to approve. The development agreement. If that's where you're going with it, would be to. Say that you would be approving it. I think you'd need to strike. Section 5.7, because that's the one in the development agreement that addresses this. You know, if, if the UGB doesn't happen. Or, you know, that, that you could have that contingency where basically you'd be getting not the road built, but right-of-way. So if, if the idea is, is that ultimately at your next discussion point. You're going to be thinking of some additional conditions perhaps on the land use approval. I think as part of this, you probably want to suggest that 5.7 is taken out of the development agreement.
David, is that all of 5.7, or is it just 5.71?
Because 5.72 has to do with the park dedication.
Mm-hmm, yeah. They're all tied to basically the. The failure of the UGB approval. And so you need to have the UGB approval to get the road built. So in my mind, 5. 7, 2 is still. A not, it's, it's really moot. If you don't, what I hear, what I hear the council saying is basically if we don't get the UGB, then the rest of it is. We'd want, we would, we would want to have the land use. Approval written in such a way that it basically is. The condition can't be satisfied, and so it would be effectively a denial. You'd never, yeah, so you wouldn't really ever get to 5.72, because if the UGB fails. The, the. The development essentially fails.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm having trouble getting my. Part of it downloaded. I think this is where the 1,800 pages are, so I'm waiting for it to download to look at the exact verage there. But. In essence, what I'm saying is, is if we don't get all those contingents. We don't get a development. And I'm still waiting for it to download. So what happened to Sandy? That I thought I was supposed to have all this super fast.
Counselor Exner, I just sent the city council a link to just the development agreement, which is only 37 pages. And by the way, for any public listening, this is up on the packet, so you can see it too. But this way, it's not all 1,800 pages.
Well, I'm still waiting for it to download here. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the, the big things in there, in the condition list in the development agreement. Are really 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 from the, from the, really 5.1 and 5.3 from the city's perspective, but. The UGB approval, having that happen. And then also the highway 211 jurisdiction transfer. I mean, at the core, that's really, I think, what the council's saying is that without those two things. There, there would not be, from the, from the city's perspective, a subdivision that would be built. Because those two things are necessary to build the road.
Right. That's where I'm at. Not to speak for all of council, that's where I'm at, Carl.
There it goes, fine.
Yeah, so. From the, from the point of view of the development agreement. My sense is that you would keep it. Everything, 5.7 would come out. Because again, that's where those contingencies are addressed. So it would be basically approved without 5.7. Then you can, as part of the subdivision approval, you would have some additional conditions as well. The UGB. 211, making those, you know. Conditions of approval, truly conditions of approval, not a contingent condition. Such that if they aren't satisfied, then the actual subdivision approval didn't, didn't happen. That condition wouldn't be met, so the, the developer would not have effectively an approval to act on. But that's at the next, that's at the next hearing. For your deliberations.
You're saying five, David, five should come out, because it says the party's rights and obligations under this agreement are contingent. Upon the following. The way I understand and read that would be, they, they would need to do those.
No, 5.7, Counselor Pete Sol, that's, that's right. Those other ones would remain, but 5.7 is. Where we've built in this escape valve.
Okay, I see. I get it. I understand now.
Can I ask a point of clarification, since I've been working on the land use application for about a year now? I don't, you know, I don't want to see, I'm not trying to persuade anybody to make any decisions, but I don't want to see, I want to kind of see this thought all the way through. Just because if the development agreement is modified, but we don't know if the developer will sign a modified development agreement or not. Then I don't even know how that would play into the conditions on the next item on the agenda tonight, without knowing that if they would even be willing to sign the modified agreement.
If they're not willing to sign it, well, guess what?
We're back to where we were last time we met.
Right, right. To me, we're at the same place either way. What, what, you know what I mean? If we don't get, if a condition doesn't get met, then it's a no. And if they don't sign it, then it's a no. Both, both ways. It's council saying this is what has to happen for us to get to yes.
So would the condition in the next, in the land use item be, one of the conditions would be the development agreement would have to be signed then, is how you're suggesting?
I think that, Kelly, but I also think just based on how the council's. Talking about potential additional conditions to the land use approval. That, you know, if you have to have a UGB expansion in order for it to be effective. That would also be there. So yes, effectively, then you'd, you'd also have a condition that would say execute the. A development agreement consistent with those conditions.
Oh, you're saying that, let's say, the UGB expansion from the county, county. Is such that it's different than what we would be able to accomplish the work, that would also. Create a, a no decision, I guess. So it. If we all.
That's what I understood. I'm sorry.
These conditions have to be accomplished, not only. To the approval, but also accomplished so that they would be reasonable to do, or wouldn't cause conflict with other conditions. In my mind, since we have other agencies, ODOT, county. I know that the developer, if any of those conditions were to change in those negotiations that are coming up. Or decisions that are coming up, that don't agree with the way we're looking at these current conditions. Part as well. Wouldn't just be get a condition of UGB to be expanded, but have to be accomplished in a way that. We could build the road, right?
Well. The, with the UGB expansion, assuming the Board of County Commissioners approves it. Then that is, the way that's been processed is that would allow for the road to be built. There really isn't anything more. That would, that would need to happen. The rest of it would kind of be up to us, what the development agreement says about the specifics of the. You know, the right-of-way that's being dedicated, the road that's being built. That all gets implemented through the, through the development agreement and some conditions of the land use approval. But there's not a lot of, we, we were trying to set it up such that, that. The conditions were, were, you know, pretty certain to be achieved. Not that there was a whole lot of. Unlikely, that, that the likelihood of all those conditions was high, and so far, that's been true. You've got a UGB decision that's. About to be approved on the third. I mean, I speak for the Board of County Commissioners, but all signs point to that.
We would know, we would know if the applicant hadn't postponed that hearing.
As far as when it would have happened first, yeah, sure. It's also possible, though, that the county would have said, if you don't have a sub, the whole idea of this is to get the road built. So if, if that decision hadn't been made yet on the subdivision, the county may have denied it too. It's, it's a. You know, it's, there's a lot of guesswork that comes into this.
Yeah, I guess in the development agreement is if you could modify the language to say that if one of the. Conditions was not met, then instead of denying the development agreement. Then the development agreement would come back to the city council to decide if that condition. Is a big enough deal to then basically deny the development agreement. So you basically give council the option at a future meeting to discuss what happened or why that condition was not met. And if they still feel like the development agreement should be in play or not.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, it's got, it's still a contract at the end of the day, right? So there has to be certainty on its sort of material terms to both sides. So. I don't know that we could, through the development agreement, kind of, you know, inch along as things go to decide whether we still want to go forward with it or not. But you certainly can have, in the land use approval, conditions that would be. These must happen. And if they don't happen, then you really don't have a land use approval. At that point, the, frankly, the development agreement becomes a little bit. Irrelevant. We need to have it because it spells out, assuming everything happens, UGB happens, 211 happens, just as it's laid out now. That specifies the road's going to be done this way, 211 is going to happen this way. It's the, it's all the timing and the specifics about the infrastructure. So I don't want you to take away from this that the development agreement isn't important. It is. But I think. What the council's really getting at in terms of saying. We are concerned that if one of those things doesn't happen, the UGB 211. That we don't want to see the subdivision go forward. That's, that's really ultimately addressed. As a condition of approval for the subdivision. To say that one of those things, be it the UGB 211. Is mandatory, that, that, that must happen. And if it does not happen. There's no approval. It's like any condition of approval. It has to be fulfilled in order to, to have an approval.
All right, guys, so this is kind of the moment of truth here, if, if we want to move forward here or not.
So I guess with that in mind, that. Help me out here, because I'm hearing back, both back and forth. 5.7 is saying that we would have that. All those conditions accomplished. Or that doesn't go forward. Is that right? We don't have to modify it with this motion?
No. To get to where you want to go, based on this discussion, I would suggest that you, the motion could be. A, a motion to approve the development as, as written with the removal of section 5.7. 5.7 is what says, hey, if the UGB doesn't happen. The developer's going to give the city a, an easement for the right-of-way, but, but can still go forward with the subdivision.
Don't want that to happen. Okay. Well, I would be willing to make a motion that council approves. This agreement, I'm not looking at the forum, so I'm not sure I got the right word right, with the contention that we remove 5.7.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Counselor Exner, second by Counselor Hamlin. Jeff, what are you doing? We'll call about.
Counselor Pete Sol.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
No.
Mayor Pulliam.
Yes.
So that's six yeses and one no.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving forward into old business. And for deliberations for the Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. I'll reopen deliberations. Which basically is a continuation of our last deliberation. So guys, here we are. We are now on the Bailey Meadows Development Application. And we've had a couple of different meetings and public testimony and staff reports that have brought us to tonight is. Any further discussion or motions on this development?
I'm personally tired of this thing.
So just one point of clarification, maybe this is where David's going to go to, but. So the, the updated staff report with the date of May 13th on it. Has all of the updated. That met the deadlines that you imposed at the last meeting on April 20th. So you'll see those as different exhibits called out in here. This also has a recommendation that the. City Council adopted a finding that the front door of the house is a lot 60 through 64 face the parkland. And this was something that was brought up by Mrs. Walker on several occasions. I got the. I went back through the findings and the conditions, and I was wrong on one of my statements in one of the previous meetings. The only house that had to face a certain way were along the future extension of Gunderson Road, so. I apologize to Ms. Walker for getting this incorrect, but she was right, that that was not in the previous conditions. We believe it was supposed to be, and it was kind of missed, so we would recommend including that. And then finding eight lists five different conditions that should either be modified, one of them being removed. From the planning commission approval. So this, this staff report is based on if you were to approve the Bailey Meadows subdivision. In addition to what the staff report has in it, and I'm sure this is where David was going to go, we would also need to identify with the motion. What other conditions and findings would need to be modified. Not, you don't have to get specific to the condition and finding in the planning commission approval. But we would want to have some sort of. Idea, I guess, of, you know, it sounded like from the previous discussion with the development agreement. You'd want some contingencies in there, that if things like the UGB expansion or the annexation don't occur. Then the subdivision would not be approved, or I don't know how you would phrase that, David, but. So I, I think we would need to add some additional language to what we're recommending here on this staff report.
That's essentially where I was going to end up, Kelly, the same sort of spot, what you just said. And, and that is, that I think. so here's, here's how it typically works in the city of Sandy and and you don't do a lot of this as a council, so I want to be sure that you're comfortable with the typical approach. Certainly very typical for the planning commission and and other times that the council has had these appeals, but you'd have this deliberation and you you'd come to what's called a tentative decision, tentative oral decision. And as Kelly said, you don't, we don't expect and nor do you need to get into the fine tooth comb of the various conditions and the findings. That's, that's for Kelly to do, that's for me to do. But we do need to have some guidance as to, okay, so, you know, the UGB sounds like it must have that, must have, you know, the highway two eleven transfer. And then that way, what what Kelly would do, I'd review and we would bring then back in a final form for the mayor to sign would be the signature, excuse me, the decision that really is the the council's official decision. And the one that that frankly matters for legal purposes. So that's the one that if someone was going to appeal, that's what they'd be appealing. So we need to just kind of give some thought to some of those other conditions. You kind of already had pretty, I think, good start on that discussion with the last agenda item. But I guess the the other thing I just wanted to clarify and maybe speak now or hold your peace, so to speak, would be that if anybody has a concern about after you do the deliberation, give us some direction that we're going to reduce that to writing and then we're going to have Stan take a look at it, Mayor Pulliam take a look at it. And then ultimately he would sign it, would not be coming, plan would not be to bring it back to council for all of you to review. And candidly, the timeline wouldn't allow that either.
Well, it sounds like we certainly, any anything that we would vote on tonight from previous discussions here this evening, it sounds like we would want those conditions to be in place where there was the assurances that 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 road and intersection would be built. From what I'm hearing.
But certainly my desire, I don't see how I could even get on board without those conditions being accomplished and all of them, so.
Yeah, and I think that was the point of that proposal was to have that done. Otherwise, it didn't make sense of going through that process.
And to answer actually Carl, one of your earlier questions, typically if you were to give a subdivision tentative plot approval, they, and this is how the planning commission order is written up, is they would submit some modified plans or some modified items to the planning department. And then right after that, they would actually apply typically for their construction plans and then get going on their grading and erosion control permits and actually get dirt moving. So we would just want to make sure that, I'm just looking at these items from Jordan's staff report on the previous item. So yes, the UGB expansion is happening very soon. The annexation process will be happening pretty soon. But then you have thirty days after that before the ordinance becomes effective. And then the jurisdictional transfer, which is bullet point three from Jordan Stafford point report on items that need to be complete. I don't know how we would tie that because the jurisdictional transfer might not happen until the end of two thousand twenty, beginning in two thousand twenty one. I don't know if you could realistically tie a condition that would be accepted by any developer I've ever worked with, that they can't move any dirt or get their erosion control permits or anything like that prior to that jurisdictional transfer occurring.
So then how would we go forward with that junction if we don't have jurisdictional responsibility for that? Would the, would ODOT be able to or willing to establish that jurisdiction with that junction rather than the entire road early on for us? So that we could actually get Gunderson to be built and tied into two eleven? How would we not, can you split that up, the whole road, the whole highway from Gunderson out to twenty six from the junction? Can you, can you do that?
Well, it'll take time to do the design and you know, obviously bidding and construction work for for that. So I mean, the issue with the jurisdiction transfer is that, you know, for in terms of a council action, that can happen relatively soon, as soon as we get the draft agreement back from ODOT. And so the council can approve that. And then, you know, ODOT, we have to wait for the ODOT approval. In the meantime, you know, the developer will be moving forward with, you know, their on their side with permits and design for for Gunderson. And I think I mean, I would be confident in proceeding with, you know, our work with the assumption that two eleven would be under the city's jurisdiction. So we would design it to you know, our standards and not, you know, the ODOT highway manual standards. But you know, Kelly did bring up a good point about trying to tie a condition based off of you know, approval that's going to take, you know, ODOT some time. You know, I think it, four to six months, I think it could take, especially with the coronavirus, how long it might take for the board there to to give final approval for for the agreement.
Yeah, I don't, I I've, in my fifteen years of land use planning in Oregon, I've never seen a approval that would, and I'm not saying you couldn't do this, but I've never seen an approval, realistically speaking, that would be tied to anything that would take more than about a month. Because typically, like the developer in this case usually would have an agreement with somebody to purchase the individual lots for sale and then build houses on them. So if if you had an unknown time period of six to plus months for the jurisdictional transfer to occur, I think that would bring up too many unknowns for any developer I've ever worked with. I think the annexation, the UGB pieces are easy to condition because we'll know the results of those in the next month. But that third piece, I just, I don't see how you do it.
Yeah, and I don't mean to argue with you, Kelly. I agree, it's hard, right? My only concern is, is I don't want to see council going or or staff going into negotiations with ODOT with Bailey Meadows hanging over their head, right? Where it's like, we're sitting at that table, we're contemplating whether or not we want to do this jurisdiction transfer and the whole time we're thinking, well, shoot, Bailey Meadows is going to get built without Gunderson if we don't do this. It just, I feel like it doesn't put us in the best decision making position at that point, you know?
Yeah, I did. I did have one additional thing, not to get us off topic, but their legal counsel emailed me and he is, I believe, correct, David could correct me if I'm wrong, but he just wanted to make sure that everybody makes disclosures since the last meeting. So I don't know how, David, you want to handle that, but that was, that was something from Mike Robinson I got.
Oh, as far as
Yeah.
Ex parte disclosures. Okay, yeah, that's, that's fair.
So do we need to do that now, David?
You can go ahead and do that now. Yeah.
Obviously, I've, you know, read all the emails and all of the communications, so that's out in the open.
Yeah, same here. I've, I've read all of the communications and of course there's been the Facebook chat or and all that I've read, but I've not corresponded or partaken in any conversations. Ex parte. This is our last meeting, you know, since, since the last disclosure.
And the same with me. I've read things sent to me, but not responded in any way.
I've read the emails sent to me, but I've not responded in any way or communicated with anybody.
I'm here.
I've had about two phone calls from some folks that I tried to push aside, try not to make any decisions, just they were individuals that just had to call me. But again, I've also touched base with all the emails and the public disclosures.
And that's, that's stuff that's, as you say, Carl, councillor Exner that came in as part of the record today with respect to the development agreement most likely, or things that came in during that open record period time about the the new condition.
We're just talking since the last time we disclosed, so.
But yeah. Okay, thank you.
So go back to how do we make sure that we have authority to put this junction in without the ODOT negotiations completed? That going to be divisible from the rest of that talk and conversation with ODOT from twenty six out to just prior, just short of dysfunction? How do we, can you do that? We can move forward with the road construction without the negotiations of twenty six?
Well, one thought I had is that you know, the intersection itself, it's just a matter of whose jurisdiction it's going to be under. It wouldn't mean that if the two eleven transfer didn't occur that the intersection couldn't be built, right? There's advantages, obviously, that it's under the city's jurisdiction.
More restrictive conditions than a city would have. So if if ODOT is going with the assumption that it's their jurisdiction, they'll be more expensive items. Is that right? Or am I wrong there? That was the whole purpose of going through the change.
Yeah, I think, I think by and large, there is truth to that to some extent, although I don't think, you know, one of the things, and I know Jordan and Mike Walker have a lot more knowledge on this, so I don't want to be speaking out of school, but our engineers are, the city's engineers and even a a second firm took a look at some of the numbers that the developers, engineers had put together on two eleven. Initially, that was sort of the I, the thought and the belief that, well, there's going to be a significant savings with two eleven under the city's jurisdiction. And there are savings. But it it isn't, the requirements, whether you're looking at ODOT standards or what effectively would be the city standards under this ASHTO standard aren't a whole lot different. And so I think a lot of it also just comes down to the fact that the city would not be needing to go through a another party, another agency to get approval, rather it would be able to approve a lot of that itself. I think some of the, obviously that'd be an easier process. I guess my point was though is that it that may be, you know, a risk issue for the city to discuss a little bit because if it seems likely that the two eleven transfer is going to happen, then, you know, this may not be as a big of an issue as it as it could be. If it's going to be almost certain that you're going to have two eleven, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm off on that. I, you know, maybe that's not not the case, but I've sort of understood it to be that way, that that was proceeding pretty well.
Mike, Jordan?
Yeah, I mean, I think the I mean, David, David's right. I mean, we looked at this, the cost savings aren't substantial for having under city jurisdiction, but you have obviously some efficiency improvements in terms of dealing with, you know, ODOT where if it's not in our jurisdiction, but we're, we're the party that is going to be constructing the improvements and the intersection, then you know, we're the ones that will be, you know, going through that process for working with ODOT on on permits and you know, the design and design review and all that. So I mean, I, I had the same assumption that we were moving on the path of the reconsideration of the the transfer for not just this project, but you know, recognizing the growth that's occurring down there and the needs for two eleven and the fact, you know, some of the points that the mayor brought up earlier, the fact that you know, we're not going to have a lot of success getting ODOT to invest in, you know, pedestrian improvements or you know, street safety improvements along that stretch. And I think it behooves us to you know, incorporate that into our transportation system, start planning for those projects. And, you know, make the improvements ourselves, take the money and you know, where we're at with the agreement now, like I said, is that with it would come the the controllers for highway twenty six. That's one of the things that has changed since the initial proposal a couple of years ago, which I think speaks to one of the council goals and in terms of traffic and and helping that part of town, getting traffic through the couple of with improved traffic management. So so I, I'm not sure how to address sort of the question about decoupling, you know, that sort of requirement that I mean, I think, yeah, I, I think we're, it kind of comes back to the council can can take on that decision, I think relatively soon, as soon as we get that draft agreement back from ODOT and the commitment letter back from ODOT. And we can, you know, continue this sort of, you know, conversation, but that intersection can be, you know, built regardless of jurisdiction. It just, I think it just muddies the process a little bit more and complicates it, you know, for the city, but also a little bit for the applicant too, who also plays a role in connecting to that right of way.
If the applicant doesn't want this to be a big deal, they can get rid of their jurisdictional requirement. I mean, it's, they're the ones that are, right? I mean, they're the ones that are making this jurisdictional transfer. We want to do it anyways. We have reasons we want to do it, but they're the ones making this a reality because they refuse to work with ODOT.
Aren't we taking over that relationship though?
That's my point though, right, is we're only entering into these conversations with ODOT and doing this jurisdictional transfer, Carl, because they refuse to work with ODOT to do the, to, you know, to connect Gunderson Road to the intersection. So if they don't like the fact that we're making that contingent on the ODOT agreement, then maybe they should pull back their their requirement.
Make it easier for me. On this thing, it just seems like we're kind of kicking this thing back and forth.
So I see Mike Robinson has his hands up, but I'm not really looking to take questions and statements from the audience unless we're going to specifically address.
You're in deliberations at this point. You really can't, you know, open it up again without creating all sorts of procedural havoc, unfortunately. That's just the way it is. I think it's true, it's true of everybody.
I think the reason he had his hand up was the thing we already addressed with making disclosures. I think, I think it's already.
So, Jordan, just tell me the difference between not getting ODOT's negotiations done with the entire highway out through this this junction and not getting that done. What are the risks and consequences? I mean, can I, can I say the risks are fairly low? And so I can say go forward on this thing? I guess I'm kind of committed to going forward on this puppy. I just, I just don't want to, have you come back to us in two months and say, oh, my goodness, now it's two plus million dollars instead of a one point seven, so. Make me feel comfortable.
The costs go up if we don't do the jurisdiction transfer. I mean, like, like David said, we've seen cost estimates from either approach and they don't change dramatically. You know, keep in mind, all these estimates are preliminary and you know, typically with preliminary estimates, they're overly conservative with lots of contingencies and, you know, design contingencies and things like that, because better to come, you know, under budget than over. But I think, I think the complication and maybe David, maybe you can articulate a little bit more why it's still, you know, in the, in the development agreement and in the requirements, but with the city taking responsibility of the intersection and managing that project is more on our side that there, you know, if we can manage our own project, that it is our own roadway and it's our own, you know, jurisdiction makes it a little bit easier for us. And I don't know if Mike's still on or not, because I'm sure we've done projects before that intersect intersect with two eleven, but I just think from a efficiency standpoint in terms of managing a city project, not having to interface with ODOT probably a little bit beneficial and, you know, saves us on time and and, you know, probably a little bit of cost on design engineering work and permitting. But I think on the applicant's side, you know, he's, he's going to apply to ODOT for construction access in order to build the you know, subdivision in Gunderson. So, you know, really it doesn't impact him as much as it does us at this point, right, David?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that the, the, you know, initially that was going to be the applicant doing Gunderson, then also doing the connection. And that was, you know, a, a big stretch in terms of, you know, how that was all going to be, you know, played out and so this was how we sort of that's, that's where we sit now is basically two eleven is going to be a city project. So, you know, ultimately it's in the city's best interest to have a connection there. And it's in the city's best interest to have it done under city jurisdiction, because if nothing else, it'll make the project smoother and probably a little bit cheaper. But it, another way to look at it, I guess, is that it's really at this point kind of out of the applicant's control, at least is how we've presented it with the revised condition. at least is how we've presented it with the revised condition. The applicant's going to do Gunderson, contribute to 211 financially, and then it's up to the city to, you know, to deliver that improvement. And so there's, the applicant has really no control over that. That's, that's really the, you know, the city and ODOT. The applicant see it, the applicant, the UGB expansion, and it's been, you know, part of that process. But I don't know. I, I mean, for me, I think 211 is a more difficult issue and also for the reasons that Kelly said, you know, how long of a delay that could be for, for any project to get started where there's really no, the applicant really doesn't have any control over that, that kind of condition.
I guess my main concern, though, is not really the condition in the Bailey Meadows final order. It's more that there's a development agreement with a condition that it has to happen within six months. So if that doesn't happen within six months, irregardless of what the Bailey Meadows condition from the land use order states, what then, what's, I guess, what happens? The development agreement's null and void, but they've already started their grading. I think there's, I don't know. I, I guess the language in the development agreement is more concerning to me than the conditions of approval in the Bailey Meadows.
I'm getting it back open.
Sorry, I just, I want to write up a final order that is, works for all, you know, works for the developer and the city and the jurisdiction transfer. But if you were to approve this tonight, I know they're going to want to start moving on things as quickly as humanly possible. And if there's a, if there's a timeframe hooked to the jurisdictional transfer in the development agreement, but they, you know, otherwise, they're already like moving forward with grading, construction plan review and construction of the subdivision. And then the jurisdictional transfer doesn't happen, what then happens in the moment agreement? I guess that's, hopefully that makes sense, what I'm saying.
Okay, so let me, let me ask these questions, and hopefully this will solve it, I'm hoping. After nine o'clock already. Whether or not ODOT's negotiations happen or not, we can still build that junction on 26 and Gunderson, right?
Yes.
That would be 211 and Gunderson, not 26.
Right, 211, that's right. Whether or not we have the negotiations with ODOT completed, the cost differences, even though there may be some advantages to the city, but the cost differences will be negligible. Correct?
Yeah, it's really the bureaucracy of the process is what is more of the problem. Mike and I and the developers met with ODOT downtown Portland probably last August. It's the bureaucracy more than the cost.
Okay, so then the question left in my mind is, with or without the finishing of the ODOT negotiations on 211, can we accomplish the, whatever negotiations, the bureaucracy stuff that happens with ODOT in a timely manner to get Bailey Meadows completed?
I mean, I think, I think if you wrote that, this is just my opinion. If you wrote the condition both in the development agreement and in the final order to read the same, that either the jurisdiction transfer needs to occur or they build it to ODOT standards with, you know, and then the city applies for ODOT permitting. I think we just need some additional flexibility in that condition in both the development agreement and in the conditions, so that if the jurisdictional transfer doesn't actually ever occur, the road can still be built with applying to ODOT and meeting their standards.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
That's, that's a compromise.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so that would just be a matter of massaging, then, some of the conditions of the subdivision approval as well as some language in the development agreement. I mean, ultimately, it's going to be the city's project. So it's, it, like I said, it's more the 211. It's more the city's issue than it is the developers. Jordan, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So anything else, Matt? Do we need to kick around, or have we horsed this one around long enough?
I'm ready for, I'm ready for a motion. If anybody wants to journey, to venture, to figure one out.
I might, I'll just, if this assists for you or not, just tell me if it doesn't. But I typically do this with the planning commission. So it sounds like the three main matters before you are accepting the modified conditions in the May 13 staff report. Well, there's five of those, one of which is a deleted condition. There's either accepting or denying the recommendation that houses on lots 60 through 64 face the parkland. And then the third part would be that we modify additional findings and conditions tied to the UGB approval, the annexation approval, and also adding additional flexibility to either having the jurisdictional transfer occurring or the road improvements on Highway 211 meeting ODOT requirements and standards. And then the only other thing that David added was that council would give us direction if David and I can work on modifying a final order and then withstands approval of reading the final order.
But like, just to make, like, I got to sign that no matter what, though, right? People's rules make me sign that, just want to be clear on that. I don't get to show up and say, oh, I don't like this anymore.
I was trying to keep track of what it was that Kelly was saying we need to make a motion on. And I caught the 1664 and I got the jurisdictional approval. I missed the first part. I wasn't writing fast enough, so.
In the, if you refer to the May 13 staff report, there's, there's a staff recommendation on finding seven. And then there's a staff recommendation on finding eight. And then there's parts one, two, three, four, and five. And basically, those are just recommendations from staff to change those five conditions in the planning commission decision.
Is there a section where we can just say what he said?
Yeah, you.
But.
Let's double check with David. David is all that correct what Kelly said?
Yeah, I think Kelly miraculously, you know, with, with all that, this is, how complicated this is, I think he summarized what you're getting at really, really well. So he, if you want to, we've done this before at the planning commission as well, where Kelly can, can, can say it again, essentially, go through what he just did. Make sure that you all think that accurately kind of captures it. And then somebody can say, literally, so moved, and a second. And you can proceed from there.
Kelly, can you do a abbreviated version of that?
Yeah, so based on the May 13, 2020 staff report number three in the packet, council would be recommending a additional condition and finding that the front doors of the houses on lots 60 through 64 face the parkland. Council would also be requiring that the conditions are modified as shown in finding eight of our report. Council would also be recommending that the approval of Bailey Meadows is tied to the UGB expansion being approved with the annexation being approved. And then also the jurisdictional transfer language, adding some flexibility that they would either meet the new ASHTO requirements or city requirements if the jurisdictional transfer occurs or meet the ODOT requirements if the jurisdictional transfer doesn't occur. And then also modifying one of the findings in the subdivision criteria to speak more to that now council believes that adequate road facilities are being provided with an extension of Gunderson Road.
So moved.
We have a.
There's a motion by Counselor Hamlin and a second by Counselor Smallwood. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Counselor Petezel?
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Mayor Polian?
Yes.
That's six yeses and one no.
Motion carries. Moving forward, utility assistance program 90-day review. I'm guessing since I get to see Tyler, that he's doing the presentation on this one.
So I think Mike and I are going to tag team this a little bit, but I'll get it kicked off. Good evening. I'm just now showing up. I've been hiding in the background, listening so far. And I'll try to make this brief because I want to respect everyone's time. So when we first implemented the customer assistance program, council had requested that we come back 90 days after that became effective to kind of give a brief overview, go over the success we've had, any questions that we've been getting from residents, and then just get feedback from the council as a whole. So at the time that the staff report was written, we had received 35 applications and approved 31 of those. Since the staff report was written, we've received four additional applications, approved two more, and then we have two pending, just seeking a little bit more information from those ones. Again, at the time the report was written, we had provided total assistance of about $2,800. With the last billing cycle, there was another $1,000 or so in assistance provided. So we're right around $3,800 in assistance provided. We've gotten wonderful feedback from those residents who have been approved. Very appreciative of the program and thanked council for that. And we've also received two main questions or comments from a handful of citizens, maybe 10 or 12 at most. The first one being that they're landlord, that they're a renter. The landlord pays their water bill, and they have seen or are expecting to see an increase in their rent. And how could the city, you know, address that potential? And the second question being from residents that live in manufactured home communities, where those manufactured home communities are on one meter and then the management company bills out the water consumption to the residents of those communities and how they could possibly see some assistance. You know, the short answer, and like I said previously, is that there's only been about a dozen at most calls requesting this. And you'll see in the staff report, we have about 600 or so multifamily units within the city. So, you know, we're definitely not seeing an overwhelming number of questions from these group of people. But we definitely wanted to bring it to council's attention to see if there's anything that you'd like to change or add to the current program. Let's see, in short, we're seeing less than 1% of a total reduction in sewer revenue. So the program itself is not costing a lot of money, but it is providing some valuable assistance to the 39 or so applicants that are currently receiving it. And with that, I'll let Mike chime in if there's anything that I have missed or anything he wants to add. I know we've talked, he and I talked a little bit earlier today about some assistance that Clackamas County provides to some low-income residents, and he might want to elaborate on that with the council a bit.
Yeah, thanks, Helen. We did check with Clackamas County Housing Authority, and they, anybody, you know, the income level we use is kind of, is the, also the income level that you can qualify for rental subsidies or housing subsidies. It's the same number that HUD uses and county uses. So we did discover that the county already provides a subsidy for utilities, specifically utility service and specifically sewer service that is added on to the housing voucher that eligible renters receive. So we don't see any need to provide a subsidy. In fact, the subsidy they provide is really greater than the rate that, you know, they would pay with our programs. So we don't see any need to provide a, any sort of customer assistance for people with housing vouchers are that are renting from the Clackamas County Housing Authority. But then, but, you know, that still leaves the manufactured home parks and the non-subsidized rental units, manufactured home parks. Two of the three do submeter their tenants and bill them for utility service. How they do that, we don't know. We really don't want to know. We don't have the staff time to go into that. So it would be difficult to say, you know, what the manufactured park home, manufactured home park ownership charges the, their customers. Is it less than what the city charges them? Is it more? Is it the same? You know, is the public service fee mixed up in that stormwater, you know, water? So it's, since we don't really know how that works, we really don't want to get into that. And then same way with non-subsidized rental units, would take a lot of staff time to determine. It wouldn't be very accurate to determine if a rent increase or a percentage of rent increase in a rental unit is related to the utility charge or is it related to other charges or just, you know, inflation in general. So it would be difficult to pick that out of a rent increase, even if the landlord was willing to provide us with detailed information, which is probably what it would take. So, you know, the other options we can look at are indirect subsidies, where we can provide water audits or water conservation devices. I've listed those costs in the staff report. Water audits, you know, could find some savings, but they're not cheap and they don't always return the cost of the audit in the savings. And that, and that's just the cost of the audit to do, to make the recommendations. The actual improvements or changes to the plumbing system that would have to be made would be on top of that. You know, we have had pretty good luck with the low-flow fixture giveaway that we've done. And we could probably, you know, maybe step that up, get available to people without a lot of overhead or application forms or income, you know, verification. But, you know, that might not provide the same level rate relief as the subsidy would. Same way with low-volume toilet rebates. We could provide those, being if you're going to pay $200 for the device and another $200 to install it. And the rebate of 40 to 85 isn't really that attractive. And then the final thing is, most dwellings constructed after 1992 already have all these water conserving devices in there so that the available savings would be even less there. So, you know, we could, we could focus on providing these indirect subsidies for dwellings built before 1992 or, you know, that don't meet the current water conservation fixture standards. You know, just guessing, you know, if there's 400 units out there, even if we did, you know, 20% of those, that would only, you know, $8,000. So I, I think that's, you know, if this, if the council wants to provide direct subsidies, you know, we, we come back with a program for that. We might have to rework the eligibility guidelines. Or if they want us to provide indirect subsidies, we could kind of pin those costs a little better and come back to the council with that. The, when we did the original customer assistance program, we looked at other cities and only Portland had a renter subsidy as part of their customer assistance program. It was nightmarishly complex just on the surface. So I don't really know how it would work if we did. But only Portland provides a rental subsidy. And their rates are considerably higher than ours. I don't know how they reconcile, you know, what any sort of rate or rent increase is how that's related to utility rate increases.
The only other option that I would add, in addition to the two that Mike mentioned, would be letting it ride as is and revisiting during our next budget cycle, you know, 11, 10 to 11 months from now, once we have a solid year's worth of data or wait until we see, you know, an overwhelming request from other residents asking for assistance. or wait until we see, you know, an overwhelming request from other residents asking for assistance that aren't currently receiving any.
So I guess, I guess that last part was my first question, Tyler, is, so my understanding is, is 34 people have applied, or I guess utility users have applied. 30 have gotten it, four rejected. So considering only four didn't meet the qualifications, is this really a problem yet? Like, I mean, are we getting folks that, you know, are in like a mobile home park that are applying but can't access the funds because, you know, we don't have a way of doing it for them? See you, Lori. Stay safe.
Yeah, of the four that had been rejected at the time the staff report was written, two of those were rejected because they lived in a manufactured home community and did not have a water account. The other two were just above the income threshold and either applied hoping that they would be approved or didn't quite understand the program itself. Those two that were denied because they don't have an active utility account with us because they're not, you know, an actual customer, were understanding when they got their rejection notice, but of course not, you know, thrilled that, that we don't have a program in place for them currently. And then, like I had mentioned, 10 or 12 calls of people kind of in that same scenario, either a renter in a multifamily unit or living in a manufactured home community currently.
So one thing that stuck out to me, and I'm not going to mention the development and stuff, but one of the folks that had offered public comment that was sent around by Mike Walker, had a line towards the end of it that basically said, "We're the last stop, you know, after us, it's homelessness." And, you know, when we put in this utility rate assistance program, or at least me, you know, when I pushed for it, it was really to get to that audience, you know, our most vulnerable citizens. And so I do have a worry that we are excluding a certain sizable portion, you know, of our community, of our most vulnerable by not having a program for these living situations. So I, for one, would want to venture out and see if maybe there's, maybe it's a set amount. We can look at the numbers and kind of try to develop an average of what we think, you know, the standard house is paying, and then there's a city contribution, like a, you know, if you're in one of these living situations, multifamily, you know, one of these situations that maybe it's a $10, $10, $20, you know, assistance program, maybe it's a set amount. I don't know. I guess I'm just, I'm looking for an outside-the-box way to kind of have a specialized program underneath this overall umbrella that can help provide some assistance to these folks. Because even though Mike said, you know, I know Mike mentioned in the report that, you know, a lot of these folks are receiving a Clackamas County or state subsidy for utilities anyways, well, they were receiving that prior to a rate increase. And so our increase is still above and beyond that. So when they're looking at their household budget, they still now have an additional expense that they didn't have previously. And of course, these are folks that are already in need of assistance that we're talking about. So I'd like to at least, that's just a long way of saying, I'd like to see us try to take out, to Mike's point, think outside the box to develop at least some kind of assistance program for these people.
If they get assistance, if they get assistance from HUD, and HUD is, do they have rules that if you get assistance from someone else, you're ineligible from the assistance that they're getting from the other programs? Are you limited to, does that limit you by offering that from the other assistance? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't, the person I talked to, the county, said that they do a survey every year. It wasn't clear when they had done the survey in Sandy on the rates, and that's how, there's a different subsidy in Milwaukee than there is in Molalla, and there's a different subsidy than there is in Sandy. So it wasn't clear how they came up with that, but the subsidy that they provide for apartments and for single-family homes is significantly greater than the amount of the increase that we have implemented. So I think the housing authority and HUD program is set up to protect some, you know, people with housing vouchers from these rate increases. So I don't think they're under a threat, the same as, you know, the people that Tyler mentioned or that Mr. Freeman mentioned. I, I asked Mr. Freeman, I said, you know, these rents are pretty remarkable. Do you, do any of your client, any of your tenants have housing vouchers? He said, no, none of mine have housing vouchers. So, you know, that's, it's pretty remarkable that he's keeping the rent low. And he is, you know, he wants to avoid doing a rate increase. He doesn't want to absorb the cost. So that's kind of the issue there. You know, at some point, he may get to the stage where he needs to do an increase rather than provide the subsidy to his tenants. But, and that wasn't clear to a lot, I think, you know, people that Tyler pointed out that called in. Maybe we didn't do a very good job of tracking this when people called in, but they couldn't demonstrate that their rent had gone, had been changed as a result of the utility bill increase, or we weren't able to gather that information. I think, you know, just when we announced that, people say, well, I pay indirectly or directly for utility service, maybe I'm eligible for this, and they were turned down, but it wasn't clear whether their landlord had changed their rent as a result of us changing the rates.
And Mike, that's a good point. You know, the majority of people that are renters, just generally speaking, have some sort of rental agreement, right? So the landlord's not increasing the rent midway through this rental agreement. So they, some of the feedback that I had received was, you know, my landlord's going to increase my rent. Well, that rent increase could be, you know, a mixture of, you know, CPI, property tax increases, you know, a whole slew of things that this is just one individual piece of, you know, five or six different factors. And so for us to try to come up with a, a program that captures the need for one tenant, which is vastly different than the need of another tenant because their landlords are different and that rate increase is different. You know, we can definitely explore options, but I think that it's going to be really difficult to come down to a consistent plan or program that we can offer to this, to these, you know, individuals.
It might be a good idea to actually reach out to the property owners, the multifamily and the manufactured home park property, or to say, you know, these rates have been in place for five months. Have you or do you plan to modify your rents as a result of this? And then we could come back to the council and say, these people are going to absorb it, these people are going to, you know, transition slowly. These people are just going to jump everybody's rent, and we'll, you know, we can get an idea of what the impact would be on people who are kind of in this situation where they don't pay a bill directly, but maybe impacted the rent increases.
I think we should also be clear, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong. Many of these multifamily, either homes, so you know, duplexes or triplexes or something like that, are going to be really difficult to provide assistance to one side of the unit because there's only one meter at the residence. So you know, if the landlord lives on one side of the duplex and you have a renter on the other side of the duplex with only one meter feeding the property, how do you divvy up who used how much sewer consumption, and you're going to give a rate reduction on 35% of the bill and not reduce, you know, the other 65% or something like that? So you know, there, there are some tenants who are in a single-family home that the landlord chooses to keep all the utilities in their name, just from a practical standpoint of ensuring that everything is paid on time. Those tenants could speak with their landlord and set up a utility account in their own name, and if they're eligible, then get assistance. But some of these other locations that only have one meter that feeds a larger group of homes is going to be really difficult to pinpoint who's using what and clearly, you know, providing assistance to them in a meaningful or structured way.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the difficulty on some of these, you know, you can have a pretty wide range of income levels in the same apartment complex, you know. And because some people, it might only be a transitional housing, and they, they're make enough to live in a single-family home, and some of them, you know, that's their only option long-term. So it's, it's just, there's just so many variables. That's what makes it tough. One thing Gresham does is they do just, say, if you get in a jam, once a year, we give you a fixed amount of money to get, to get out of this jam. That's, Gresham doesn't have a customer assistance program. They just have a one-time annual cash payment if you get into trouble, you can't pay your utility bills. And then one thing that Tyler mentioned as well is, you, you really, there's no way to know, you know, multifamily unit, who's using what, you know, the cost of splitting up the plumbing in a 10-unit apartment would, you know, be very expensive. And, you know, you'd take a long time to recover that from the savings water bills.
I think from your statement before, if I heard you right, was that you haven't found anybody, any other cities that has kind of done anything for this except for Portland, and it's kind of really complicated. If I heard that right, and I mean, this may be the same boat that, say, Cambie and Molalla and Troutdale, or, you know, just name all the cities we normally compare ourselves with. And they're in the same boat, right? There's not really a clear answer for this. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we could go back to those cities and say, this is a problem we've run into with our program. Have you run into this? How did you deal with this? And one thing that we talked about earlier, Tyler and I, was that, you know, renters, turnover in a rental unit is usually a little greater than a single family. So you could have a subsidy that you provide to tenant A, and then tenant A moves out. You know, it would have to go with the tenant. There's no way to do it on the bills since they don't pay one. So you'd be making a cash payment to the tenant, and if the tenant moved out, you know, that would go away because they're no longer in that situation. And how do you get, you know, we, we don't, we don't know when, it's very difficult for homeowners to tell us when they move out with utility service, but we, it would be really difficult to track how tenants move in and out. So could somebody, somebody might still get the cash payment if they, even if they don't even live in Sandy anymore. So, you know, that would, that would take some staff time to track down, oh, do you still live in that rental unit? Who, or no, you don't, or who lives there now? I don't know, you know, or to go to the landlord to find that out and see if they're interested, see if they're eligible. It's just, you know, it'd be a burden for staff.
Counselor Lee, I like that you had the intuition to know that you needed to wave your hand to get my attention.
I think we're a long way from having answers, and so probably Tyler's recommendation that we come back in several months when we have more information might be worthwhile.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
You know, I'll, I'll have our utility clerk and anyone else that answers the phones at City Hall continue to monitor what questions we're receiving. And if we see a shift in, you know, either the volume or the type of questions being asked, we can absolutely have another, you know, workshop agenda item or just a quick, you know, topic during the regular council meeting to bring it back to council's attention and just let you know what's going on.
Well, Tyler, wave my hand here. Do you think any of this is related to the unemployment issues around the coronavirus? I guess I'm wondering if this thing continues for a while, or I'm aware there's an appeal on the governor's stay-at-home ruling that kind of relieves, and we get people going back to work again. Do you think it has much of effect by the unemployment rate that's going on right now?
Yeah, part of the application program was gross earnings for, you know, the most recent calendar year. So we're going off of people's 2019 taxes or 2019 social security statements. To my knowledge, we haven't received any calls asking for assistance specifically related to a COVID-19 issue, like a layoff or furlough or something like that. I would expect, you know, in the coming weeks and months, to, to continue to see an increase in the number of customers that we have that are past due with their utility bills in general. And then maybe trying to seek, you know, some financial assistance in that regard, but not specifically related to the sewer portion of their bill, just, you know, from, from the bill in its entirety. We have a couple of people already that are now, you know, three or four months past due because they were on the shut-off list in March when we stopped, or when we suspended shut-offs, and now we've done April billing and May billing. And so we are starting to see a couple, you know, residents with a $1,000 bill that is outstanding. And so we're going to have some issues as we move forward, getting those funds collected. Ultimately, you know, the, the charges stay with the property, so we will always get paid. It's just a matter of how timely we get paid.
Yeah, I think, wait a few more months, see what's going on, get a view from a little longer time period.
Sounds good. Okay. Moving on to our next item.
Thank you.
10.3 Transit Operations Contract Authorization. Andy, you're going to have to start lobbying Jordan a little harder behind the scenes to get moved up on that agenda. Welcome.
I'm sorry, Andy.
You know, you know, Jordan, you kind of owe the apology.
Did you want to do Bailey Meadows late?
It's okay. I will say too that due to where we were in negotiations, I was the last one sliding this draft contract into the packet as well. So I'll take some blame, but, but thanks. I will lobby Jordan next time. So, good evening, and I am happy to round us out because I think I'm bringing good news and maybe a lighter topic, although it is a fairly large contract. When I went before you at the end of April, I presented that MV was indeed the winner of the RFQ. They were the lowest bid for the two-year time span. They did have three pages of items of discussion, and I wanted to get your permission to move forward and negotiate, but I also went into that negotiation process with kind of an open mind that, especially with those items of discussion, and, and frankly, the, the really good proposal they put forward that maybe in negotiations, I might find something I didn't expect. What I did find in those negotiations is, first of all, they've been really easy to work with. Even without a contract or a notice to proceed, they have had two employees who were the key persons in their bid proposal on site since the beginning of May, every day, just doing an assessment of what we have here, what they need to order. They've been bringing in the things that they need. They've, they've been really great. They started the, the process of pulling the drivers over because they are aware we are on a tight timeline. And they wanted to be sure and meet that timeline. I will say that originally in the RFQ, we asked that they take over by May 25th. And during the negotiations, we have settled on the drivers transferring off of the city of Sandy payroll on May 29th and on to MV's payroll on May 30th. And that is because MV will start benefits on the first of every month, so that gets the driver as close to the beginning date with MV as the date that their benefits begin. We, I just want to remind you as well that not only were they the lowest bid, but they also, and I have attached their bid in here for you to read, they offer the most hours of training of all the proposals. They are going to put DriveCams on every vehicle and Mobile Eye technology on every vehicle. And just to give you a quick brief update on what that is, the DriveCams is a small camera that's on the driver. We have cameras on our vehicles, but not necessarily on the driver. And those cameras, if there's an abrupt stop, they'll trigger to come on and they will record, I think it's 10 seconds prior to that abrupt stop. If they sense something like a disturbance in the vehicle, they will automatically come on, and drivers can also trigger them to come on if the driver is having a problem. MV views these as a coaching tool. So they use them quite a bit in their training. And then the Mobile Eye is, is pretty much what it sounds like, where it's cameras and sensors on the vehicles that, again, trigger an alert if there's someone in a blind spot, a vehicle or a person, the various areas around the vehicle, et cetera. So they bring a lot to the table, especially considering that the rate is comparable to what the city of Sandy would have been looking at had we brought it in-house. One thing that I do want to point out about the contract, and maybe I can just, maybe the fastest thing, since it doesn't currently have page numbers on it, so it might be hard to find, is if Page numbers on it, so it might be hard to find, is if I try to share my screen. Can you guys see my screen there with employee retention? Okay, so one of the things, um, again, they've been really, really good during the negotiation process. This was a process where the county's procurement department and myself were working together to make sure our contracts align. Which also means that our legal and county's legal were working together. Not usually an easy process, but in this case it, it seemed to be. And one of the things that I'm going to point out because I, I believe it shows the integrity of this company. Is that in their bid proposal, I had stated that our drivers. Had a certain wage that I expected the company to meet. And that the drivers had been provided an in lieu of insurance at $400, both by Rojoy and. Sort of by the city. We actually rolled it. We couldn't provide benefits, so we had rolled it into their hourly pay. MV and their proposal had said that they would offer a benefit package and the driver's wages. And that if the driver chose not to have a benefit package, then they would provide the same $400 in lieu. That the driver was receiving to keep that driver whole. In this process, they realized they're a larger company than Rojoy was. And they can't do that with the ACA. They cannot provide a $400 in lieu. So um, what they have decided to do is to continue to meet the driver's current wage. And grandfather in a $400 monthly bonus and provide a benefit package if they choose one. So during the negotiation phase, um, not only did, did they stay with the rate that they proposed in their document. Fairly easy again to, to sort through some of their items of discussion. Um, and thank you, David Doofman, for helping me on those. And um. And now they've actually negotiated a better package for the drivers than what was in their original RFQ. They also have been great about working with me to identify which current employees. Will go into various positions that they had proposed. Because I really wanted to keep some of the drivers who were acting as mechanics to continue as a mechanic and, and not have a new employee. MVs brought in for that position and they've agreed and that's the two names that you see there in that employee retention. So um, I have put in my staff report that my recommendation. Is to authorize the city manager to sign the contract between MV and the city of Sandy Transit Department.
Awesome. Thank you, Andy. And then I just would say on the drive cam. Awesome. I, I worked to get all those into all my clients with fleet vehicles. You're going to see benefits. Uh, beyond just what you even described. I mean, the drivers know that they're there and then they're a great, they're just a great resource to have whenever there's any kind of traffic. Incident. So that's awesome. Uh, yeah, I'm really good with this. Looking for, uh, you've done really good work and really done a good job of keeping us up to date. Through the process and the ebbs and flows that you've gone through with this and had a lot thrown at you. And probably ended up uh, kind of in an area you might not have expected when you first began, but you did a very good job. Very much appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, questions, comments, or a, a motion to show Andy how, how well we thought she did. Yeah, Counselor Lee, you have your hand up, but you're going to have to unmute yourself first. Yep.
Oh, there it is. Okay. I just wanted to move that we have um, Director Howell. Approved the contract and move forward. We approved the contract that as she's recommended.
I'll second that um, city manager signed the contract for MV transportation.
Yep, a motion by Counselor Lee and a second by Counselor Pete Sold to instruct staff to sign the agreement. Um, Jeff, will you do a roll call though?
Counselor Pete Sold.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood appears to be absent. Counselor Hamblin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
Yes. Motion carries.
Great job.
Thank you. I look forward to it. 10 days.
Yes, and I'm going to be very careful on this next agenda. I'm going to look for your name and make sure you're up there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Uh, all right, Jordan, report from the city manager.
Whew, all right. You guys ready to talk a little bit about our favorite topic?
No, here we go.
Um, I was wanting to give you just a, an update on COVID-19 and um, we're at the recent happenings. Um, a lot of activity in the last couple of weeks and um, you know, we're keeping you apprised with uh, emails about. You know, the governor's plan and the phasing and where the Clackamas County Board is at with their plan. And we want to say thanks to Counselor Lee for her thorough notes. So she's done a good job of participating or at least. You know, watching those press conferences and seeing all the information coming out, um, you know, out of the firehose and distilling that down. So um, you know, thank you for that. Um, so right now, we're tomorrow, the Clackamas County Board is going to be reviewing. And, and I think they will be submitting their application for phase one to the governor. And uh, they're just, uh, so it's Clackamas, Multnomah and Washington that have not submitted plans yet. Now they expect Washington to do the same uh, next uh, tomorrow. But uh, so I'd be thinking that Clackamas is probably going to be opening um, around Memorial Day. My guess is after just because of three day weekend, um, holiday weekend, they probably want to open it after that. But that's just a guess. I don't know. Um, we don't know if the governor is going to have different and maybe, maybe others do, but um, different. Uh, review criteria or a different threshold for the more urban counties here in the Portland area. But um, so we're getting close to a reopening of bars and restaurants, uh, gyms and some other. Personal services, uh, businesses like barber shops and salons right now as of May fifteenth. Pretty much every retail category besides those specifically named in that close order. And tied to the phasing plan for the counties are open. Um, so you've probably seen headlines about different businesses. You know, department stores and the like, um, starting to open. Um, many of those weren't actually closed. They were just decided to close, um, given that people were pretty much ordered to stay home. You know, for the last couple of months. So internally, so we're watching, you know, we continue to watch that, that plan and prepare. There's going to be, um, I'm sure a flurry of activity and there, there are some, um, you know. Something happenings today. I don't know if you guys have been monitoring your email, but the spring court did stay. Uh, that ruling out of Baker County. So the time being, um, the governor's executive. Powers are intact and um, uh, executive orders are, um, are in place. But uh, so we, you know, we're continuing to work on our plans for reopening. Um, we have a pretty good outline of the facility needs. What our checklists are for safely opening back up to the public. Police station, city hall will be the first. Uh, police is an easy one for us, given that how it's designed and the protections are already in place. And they don't get a lot of traffic. Um, and then city hall, our main priority there will be municipal court and making sure we can open. That function safely, um, and under the right guidelines, requirements. So distancing, probably metering, uh, making sure we have signage for people to come in one way and out another. And we do have a pretty good backlog at this point of traffic violations and court appearances. So it's something that, you know, we want to address relatively soon. But you know, we're probably going to be looking to open our facilities in coordination with other communities, but also with the phasing. So uh, for sure, library um, will be uh, in a, in phase two. And then uh, community center, senior center um, will be at a future phase as well, given that it, it, you know, is our vulnerable population. And a lot of the activities there, um, programs and stuff, um, don't really lend themselves well to sort of the distancing that you need to do. Parks update, uh, you probably saw that we did open the dog park um, this last weekend, Friday, I think. Was a little better time to be there than our soggy weekend. Uh, but there's been some activity. Really, it's a soft opening, I guess. Um, as we prepare new signage for the rest of our parks. Because parks, um, outdoor recreation is allowed to be open uh, under new guidelines. Um, and we just want to make sure that we have the right information posted about that. And uh, skate park um, is still ordered to be closed um, in sports courts. So um, they don't affect us too much. Skate park obviously does. But I think that's good news that it will be able to update our signage and get the word out about folks being able to enjoy our parks. As long as they're not doing contact sports and things like that, but passively enjoying Sandy's great parks is a good thing. And then uh, there's a, there's something that came up again today. Um, and actually this, I know you love it when I do this to the council. During my city manager's report, but this was an email that I just received and I think the council, you might have received it. Today too, from the LOC. It's an alert about how the funding uh, is going to work in terms of what the state received for the CARES Act. So the governor is, I'm going to allocate 200 million to local jurisdictions. Uh, of the portion of state funding that is going to the state. So we do have um, apparently, and this is so fresh that I, you know, barely gotten into it and opened it. But um, as part of that relief fund, um, we can complete an application or a request form that we submit. There's a federal funding certification because of federal, it's tied to federal, federal dollars from the CARES Act. So um, we, we need to apply by, or need to submit our form by the twenty second. And this is the first round of reimbursements that would be March first through May fifteenth. It's not for anything that's uh, to replace, um, you know, uh, city resources or revenue. It's uh, for qualifying expenses related to the COVID emergency. So you know, um, any kind of uh, public health expenses, protection, equipment, things like that. So we have been tracking those, uh, those expenses as eligible, eligible expenses. And so um, you know, unless we receive further, further information, I think we, you know, need to fill out these forms and get our requests in. Uh, but as part of that, because it's federal dollars, um, one of the things I do need is have your authority and approval. From you, the governing body, um, to request uh, the, the payment from the state of Oregon. So I don't know if that's a, just a simple motion. Um, at least we have it on, we would have it on record that you have authorized me to. Seek federal funds.
Let's go through that process. One thing I would ask you to do, Jordan, I think it was Mayor Coway out of Hillsborough might have mentioned it to me. But he, so, somebody seems to think that some of these local relief programs that we've done for local businesses. Might be eligible for reimbursement in the CARES Act. So I would just want to make sure we look into that.
Yeah, um, and I think the LOC's um, guidance talked a little bit about that and that we should. Even though we're not sure what they're, how they're going to rule on that, how the state will, if they'll include that or not, but we should still include them as other eligible expenses. And uh, and you know, the chance that we will get those reimbursed.
And I'm thinking things like Andy, right? I, I think transit had to do a lot of expenses. I mean, this is kind of, I, I've spent the last couple of months. Getting my clients ready for the safe workers comp fund, right? So you know, all these expenses that we have, we incurred. I mean, I would really get outside the box and apply for every, every penny of these things.
Yeah.
I would make a motion that uh, we allow the city manager to apply for federal and state funds.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Pete Sold, a second by Counselor Exner. Um, Jeff, we do a quick roll call.
Counselor Pete Sold?
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood?
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz? Mayor Pulliam?
Yes. Congratulations, Jordan.
Thank you. So we get some stuff, some hula now. Um, I appreciate that. Um, and actually, thank you to Tyler who caught that in the form um, and sent that to me so uh, timely. Um, given that, well, we only get a few days to submit the request, so um, I appreciate that. So I'm happy to answer any questions about, um, you know, I, I'm sure we're all experts now on the coronavirus. And what's going on in the COVID world, but um, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, I won't take too much of your time. I'll get that. The non-related would be the, that water recycling report. Thank you, Counselor Lee, for suggesting that. We'll get that posted. I think it's pretty informative and interesting. I think we will have definitely a council conversation about that. When we get, get to that point, especially as we look at other just, just charge alternatives. But you know, it might be one of those choices that what you guys will face, that it may take some additional investment to get out. To some of those areas that um, seemed like there was potential like uh, north of Calso Road. Um, but it might take, you know, more investment in building the pipeline to get out there. Just that it's not going to be in, you know, the route um, that would be taken to the Sandy or Rosson Lake or other alternative. So um, you know, if you, if you need something to read uh, during our quarantine, um, take a look at it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all right, let's go to counselor and committee reports. We'll start with you, Counselor Schultz.
And we are going to, the library board's going to convene this Wednesday and they're going to talk about some of the. Strategies they'll use for when we get the go ahead to reopen. Other than that, I have nothing new.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I've got a art commission meeting on Wednesday as well. Uh, I'll be discussing some of the different. Muriels and how to finish that celebration up. It's been delayed one time after the other. It seems like they don't seem to. Be able to get together with anything that uh, with, requires people being together. So I'm hoping that that'll happen then after we open up some. Happened to have a phone call uh, this past week from the owner of trackers. Uh, I think it's a really good idea, but in respect for the timing, I just want to just bring it up. And let you know that I'm going to be bringing it up hopefully earlier in an evening on a council meeting. Uh, they, he has asked that, or he has suggested that he would like to partner with the city. He's got a camping site over there that has potential for having 600, 700 kids be able to do things. They are organized in that they can make some of that stuff happen, might even be able to interact with our desire for daycare. Just, it just does a lot of different things that they're just empty over there and he's looking for a way to not only be more useful. But I think he's looking for a way to um, partner up and be kind of a comfortable relationship as we get closer to our wastewater. Conversations and planning for be dumping our sewer water into his lake. So I, you hear that more coming up as I have more time. I don't want to go.
Uh, and sorry, I didn't call you back on this today. It just got, it got away from me. Yeah, he's very excited. He had Rocky Dome, his uh, public affairs guy. Reach out to me, reach out to me twice. Uh, so I think he, you know, was willing to put some funds behind it and is really excited. And just clarify though, is we're not putting our sewer water uh, on his property. We're putting our treated sewer.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's not go too late tonight. It's like I said, it's kind of a late evening night. I think you're going to hear more of this, certainly from me, and it's hopefully we'll get this up in the conversation mode. And real quickly, because I don't want to go very far with this one, but as a. Point of reference, um, I'm a little concerned about some of our committee members. We've got some potential conflict of interest. We've got some committee members that are making suggestions and think they're outside their. Committee responsibility. And I think it's, as we get closer to the time when we start looking at committee. Renewals and uh, elections or approvals. Uh, that we might want to take a look at some of these concerns as, at least I see them coming up. So I'll make sure that that's in there. And then lastly, uh, real quick. I'm seeing a bunch of businesses chatting about how not to go back to operating. Like they have in the past. For example, my Wind Ameri, uh, real estate office is doing pretty well without having a building to go to. We may not uh, operate at all in the way we've had in the last 40 years. We may operate from our homes completely. A lot of businesses are trying to talk about that. I think that might make some changes. And now we have a business district downtown. So with that, I'm going to pass it on.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Lee?
Yes, it's my understanding from listening to the House and Senate Revenue Committees the other day. That there will be additional financing opportunities or grants for cities and special districts. That would be more related to some of the economic losses that this first. that would be more related to some of the economic losses, that this first round was only for health, but there'll be more coming. So you may have heard that also, Jordan, but I just wanted to clarify, it's not a one time thing. I'm looking forward to the virtual transit meeting we're going to have soon and report on that later. And for those of you who want to have some severe punishment on the twentieth at nine AM, you can listen to the legislature talk about the revenue shortfall. That's all I have.
I think they'll take a path on that one.
I think I know what they're gonna say.
Right.
Yeah.
Billion this, five billion next.
Counselor Hamblin?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank Counselor Lee for keeping us informed and up to date. You amaze me with how much reading you're capable of doing and how much reading you pass off to others as well too. And I'm just really impressed with how well you stayed on top of the situation and your advocacy as well too. From the school board, you'll likely, if you're a parent of a Oregon Trail School District child, you'll likely have received an email from the district about furlough days. So there's four furlough days. They're using funding that you likely saw through Portland Public Schools. I think it's somewhat controversial still. But as more school districts utilize it, I think it'll be less controversial moving forward. But doing some pretty substantial reductions with those furloughs to save the school district looks like about $450,000. I, I think this will become more and more common across the state as well too. Also, for parents of school age children in the district, each of the schools are doing pickup of kids belongings as well too. So just for folks on here and then folks that may be listening as well too, look out for a message from your school principal and teacher around pickup of student belongings before the end of the year. There, I know each school is going to do a little bit different scheduling, but like NAS, where my son goes is doing theirs this week right now. So but those are my updates. Thank you.
Counselor Pete Sol? Oh, man, I was doing so good. Counselor Smallwood?
Well, I gotta give you a little credit because it's not really easy to do, right?
It's not. I'm playing it in my head.
Right? First of all, hi guys. Good to see everybody. So I'm looking forward to when we can get back kind of to a sense of normalcy. Thanks to Sarah for getting a dog park signage up and working on that last Friday and and Jordan getting that moving forward. Appreciate that. I'm kind of excited to have that open, even though I don't really utilize it. Thanks again to Sandy Transit for the trolley for the birthday parades. Yay. And school bus services. And again, to Sandy Police, it's fantastic seeing everybody out there. The Parks Board met last week and they're working, of course, you know, toward the Parks Master Plan. And then there's been some renewed concern about the city's use of Roundup. So there'll be more to come on that. They're kind of wanting a policy in regards to that. And then lastly, thanks to Tanya and Lieutenant Sean Laundrie for helping with the food baskets the other day that were delivered at the cinemas through the Oregon Food Bank. And if you guys know of any, oh, and Sandy Helping Hands, I don't want to leave them out. They were there as well. And if you guys know of anybody that could be, that could benefit a food box, they were actually, were really good. They'll be up in Welch's on Thursday at one thirty. And it's on the Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office website for the, for the exact location. So that's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you. Counselor Pete Sol?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. One would be for Mike. The, on the corner of Bluff and Hood Street there, when Zayo came in and put their undergrounding with all their four conduits through town, they were supposed to replace that sidewalk. And I've brought this up a few times in the past. But they still have not done that and kind of getting long since that project has been over. So hopefully, we can get them out there to do what they were supposed to have done before they left our city. You have any updates on that, Mike?
I know they were using kind of a lame excuse that they couldn't acquire the permeable previous concrete. We told them they could use something else and, you know, and I never heard that. But yeah, we'll pick that up again with them.
Yeah, they've replaced all the other ones. I know that particular section is that permeable concrete versus everywhere else. But anyways, that's the only one that I still see outstanding from when I am out and about. Then OBAC, we've met, you know, and to Carl's point. So OBAC is Oregon Broadband Advisory Council. And as people have stated on that, they are looking at and getting reports also from people that are not, are looking at not returning to the big cities anymore and working from home and saving millions of dollars in leases or selling their properties and needing a smaller facility to meet, not just in our area, but in Washington and California and other places as well. So communities like ours may see people more at home, more like Carl and Stan, where you kind of work at home or from anywhere. Or do you guys work anymore? I don't know. You guys are always free. So anyway, no, I'm just joking. But, but more of that local versus, you know, time, which could put a burden on some of those restaurants and things in downtown Portland, for instance, is our big metropolis around here. But that being said, shift in how they do their business and maybe the same thing is like Carl was saying within, inside our own community here and how that will take advantage. We, and this will be my Sandy Net plug, you know, have done amazing on that in the fact that we are able to work from home and people realize that. And I heard stories from all over where that is not happening very well because of that infrastructure. And so there's a big push to be able to get some stuff shovel ready around the state to look like what we have here in Sandy. And we get used as that example, as well as a couple of other communities. I also attended a Clackamas County internet listening group, they called it. And a campful county commissioners are there wanting to hear from the public about their internet situation around Clackamas County. And in that also presented from schools and other places, we're trying to do distance learning and that type of thing. But I have to say, in that session, there is about fourteen, fifteen different comments of, we want to have the City of Sandy's internet, basically what we do here across the entire county. And it kept on coming up to where I had to chime in. And they're like, oh, you're listening. So I was able to communicate that, what we've had here. But several of those that called in were just outside our city limits, obviously, in hard reach areas between here and the mountain and other places that we've known about already. But in the process, they kept talking about some grants and some funding from the feds. And afterwards, I was able to get some more information on some of those funding opportunities. Not necessarily excited about the prospects of a couple of them, but but the point is, is that from OBAC and from that, there will be some more funding strategies that could help existing ISPs like ourselves be able to expand farther into the rural areas or expand on that. And so there's going to be a driving force with this whole pandemic going that we have some more opportunities to do that and hope our residents right outside. Also in that, we've set up with Sandy Net, with the county, with the Clackamas ESD, with the schools, a bunch of different hotspots around the region. And in Sandy, you know, there's the high school, there's Furwood, there's Boring, which you know, aside the city limits, there's Welch's and up at the government camp. Sandy Nets put a spot there for free wifi to come and be able to do schooling in your car or do, you know, apply for jobs or other things online where the library is not available at this time. So anyways, that's all.
Great. Thank you. Real quick report for me, just kind of reiterate some of what Jordan said on the communication on COVID-19. I don't know how many calls you guys are getting from different business owners and stuff, just like what is going on? What is happening with all this information going on out there? So, you know, I think a lot of us have been able to get information from Councilor Lee and different meetings and the things that we've been reading. But, but it's looking like it's that tomorrow, the Clackamas County Commission is going to have a reopening plan in front of them, as Jordan mentioned. The indications are is that the commission is going to approve to submit that plan to the governor's office. And then it will be in the governor's hands at that point. There has been talk, right, of the tri-county coordination. But at this point, it seems like Washington's kind of going their own path, Multnomah their own path, and Clackamas theirs. Where Clackamas will probably be the first of the three to get the approval to open up, Washington a little bit thereafter, and then Multnomah County will be the last to open. So that's kind of where we sit there. No one knows really when the governor is going to approve once the application gets in. But indications are that she's going to look to approve fairly quickly. So that's what the hope is. I mean, obviously, once you apply, you find out really what your status is at that time. In addition to that, just real quickly, what Jordan mentioned too is that there's this Baker County court case. And that has now been, the governor indicated that she would appeal it to the State Supreme Court. And the State Supreme Court has now said they're going to hear it and then reinforced her order. So her order is in place. So if any business owner asks, what should we do? Can we all open up? The order's back in place. The Oregon Supreme Court ratified that. They're hearing it. And then they'll be making a decision, you know, whether or not to reopen and how that decision lies on the timeline of these counties applying for approval, you know, we'll have to see. With the counties applying for approval, though, remember it's a phased approach. When in the court case, it's kind of like, here we are, right? If that really is the way we're gonna go, it's like we're back open again. But I'm guessing the Supreme Court is going to uphold the governor's order. That's kind of reading the tea leaves on that. And then we're going to be back to this, this county approval process, which we're hoping. I tend to agree with Jordan. I think the governor will probably give the approval after the Memorial Day rush and not prior. But just like Jordan, that's my gut as well. So that's all I really have for an update. Sorry, C four, I went to C four last week and we talked about the metro transportation T twenty twenty. As typical C four, everyone in Clackamas County complaining we weren't getting our fair share. It's very little we can do about it. We decided to argue it over at the next meeting. So that's that. With that, that's, that's my report and all I have for today. Long meeting. I got through a lot. Thank you for everybody's attention and a lot of reading and homework we had for tonight's meeting. And yeah, just very much appreciate it. And have a nice evening, what's left in it, you know. I don't know if y'all stay up late or not, but enjoy what's left. See you guys. Adieu.
Thanks.